Hi Caitlin, can you hear me?
I know. I wish it was more rounded. Then I could see you. So that'd be like.
What's that?
We need a more rounded DAS.
Oh yeah, no, I've always disliked this thing. Although we make it work talking to each other. I'd much rather have it be.
You can mix it up and change seat points a lot.
We could do that. Boy, girl, boy, girl.
Three, one, two, two, one, three. Are you getting raised on that or did? Bad at happy. You, you know, you can do cheese.
It's only fifty K. Record it out loud.
Dan's got, Dan got a chain, so there are two of them. The two oldest guy, Terry, Dan are gonna. We told Sterling he needs a new category sixty-five plus, not just sixty-four. Well, that would be Terry, Gooch, and Dan. And they would win.
I'm pleased that my, uh, my circuit has a seventy-plus class.
Yeah, there you go, right?
No, seriously. Cause, cause I, you know, when I was in my sixties. Right, but, but now I'm not and I can't go that speed anymore. I don't know why. It's the same bike, it's the same train. What the hell's the problem?
I, I can't imagine.
I can't either.
Hi Cristiano and Caitlin, people on Zoom, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? I can hear you Lori, can you hear me?
Thank you Caitlin.
Good, how are you doing?
No, I do. You know what? Would you fix that clock real quick? You have, uh, have about a minute and a half. You know, that's, that's the thing is legislators thinking of stopping change, except they're gonna stop it in the wrong direction.
Which one?
They're gonna. Well, they wanna go back to where the sunset's earlier in the evening, not later. I, I'm thinking, I, I like the idea of not making the change, but I think that's the wrong thing to do.
So it'd be last week's time.
Yeah, he can do it.
Okay, we have a forum, have we heard from anybody?
Dana's on.
Oh Dana. Hi Dana.
Hi.
Alright, good deal.
Jim's probably buried in skis right now.
Spring break? I can only imagine. Yeah, sure. So we'll see if Christian, we'll give him just a minute, it's his clock now, but we'll start soon.
Hey Lori. Hey Tommy. Good, how are you doing?
Tommy, I got a nice compliment, I may have already told you this, but I was at the Park Hill meeting and, uh, and, and Danny Duran was complimenting the street department and how good the streets have worked this year. I didn't say anything about it, it hasn't snowed yet this year. Hey Dana, what you got?
I just wanted to compliment the street department also. Uh, we recently returned from Minneapolis where they had a quote, "snow emergency", where about eight inches of snow fell on the weekend. And we arrived in the middle of that storm and there was absolutely no plowing efforts all weekend on the sidewalks or the streets. It was an unbelievable, um, missed opportunity and it made me really appreciate, uh, a, a, a street department that works weekends and that, uh, tries to clear the roads for, uh, for people and visitors, so, thank you.
Did you say eight inches?
Eight, eight, sorry. I know, and they called it a snow emergency, we, we are, we were feeling a little, uh, stuck up.
I think Minneapolis would have that dialed in.
You'd think, we walked for blocks through eight inches of snow with our luggage.
Sorry. Well, your lead bill tough, so it's okay.
We, we arrived wearing snow boots, we were ready.
Okay, we're gonna go and get started with respect to everybody's time, cause, uh, we're gonna have to be done by six forty-five. So at six oh two, I called the city council meeting of March the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, door. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Here.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Luna Leo. Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Here.
Councilmember for Gensy.
Present.
Councilmember Zar.
Present.
Mayor Lobby.
I'm here. Thank you very much. At this time, uh, is there anything on the agenda anybody would like to change? I do have addition to the agenda, uh, Tracy, go ahead.
I was gonna move for the additions.
Go ahead and do that then.
Um, I moved to add to the agenda, um, resolution number eleven, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorized in the purchase of real property known as four thirty-one, fifth and Harrison.
A second.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good, we have an agenda. At this time, housekeeping matters, anything anybody would like to talk about, uh, before we get rolling?
I have a few things.
Uh, no kidding. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, first, any deputy city clerk applicants or progress?
Lori.
Will that be part of your report? Okay, we don't have to talk about it now, man. Thank you. Um, secondly, um, now that the housing director is, uh, rolling, have they started as a?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Can you remind me what the, um, supervision structure of that position is? I know it's in the county. Then isn't there some kind of board?
She reports directly to Tim.
Okay.
The county manager.
Okay.
With the oversight of the county commissioner. And the input of the city of Weddell.
Input of city of Weddell.
Yeah, that, that was left a little bit unofficial.
Yep.
We originally wanted to put together a, a committee, you know, kinda like we do with the, with the fire management board, uh, was kind of decided not to do that. I still wanted, it was decided not to do it.
Thank you, I'm, I'm wondering if we could request a monthly report out like we are getting tonight from other departments. Um, but since that is a shared position, I'd love to stay appraised of what their priorities are, strategies are, things like that.
I would suggest if you want that, I, I like the idea, but maybe make it quarterly, especially right now monthly, she's, she's going to be, you know.
Okay.
Uh, really trying hard to learn as much as she possibly can.
Okay.
So I had a really good email conversation with Tim yesterday evening, and Lori included you in that. And, and he started, I mean, he started in earnest, you know, getting, trying to get her up to speed on, uh, the housing coalition, uh, the housing feasibility study, the Merck students, uh, charrettes. Uh, and, and next he's gonna work on the housing action plan. Uh, and we have a couple meetings still this week with her, what is in the morning, uh, here, a group of us get together to talk about what our priorities are going to be, what we want those focal points for her to be at the beginning, because if she tries to do it all, you know, it, it just would be impossible.
Agreed, that's all great to hear, um, do you think that would be a, a reasonable ask to get regular updates or is there a better?
Yes, I would, if you wanna, if you wanna make that request, um, I think that we should make it to Tim.
Okay.
Her, her direct supervisor, Lori, what do you?
Or, I, I was gonna say, I can include it in my update, my report to council, because I assume that that's how, you know, the mayor and I would be involved in the meetings that involve the city, so we could just give a quick update in our reports.
Yeah, whatever the best pathway is, I think, um, just to, to retain that kinda real time tuned into what's happening would be great.
Cause there's a, you'll, you'll like my report tonight, there's a lot going on.
Okay, super. Thank you.
What else?
That's all, thank you.
Alright, thanks, let's go, anybody else? She's not hearing the, the council. So Brittany, Caitlin, also Tim has joined us, thanks Tim.
Who's that? Tim Hill, isn't?
No, it's Tim Burridge.
Yeah.
Do, we can ask if. Is it the council they can't hear? Uh, have, have somebody just give us a test and that?
Great for months.
Test, 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 test.
Dana, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you guys okay, but I'm under a pile of blankets, so I have a little echo chamber.
Maybe we should all, that's how we should hold city council.
Yeah.
You don't recommend it.
With lots of blankets. Okay, nevermind.
Let's check with HR on that, shall we?
Okay, well, it's not. Especially if Dana, I'm sorry you're sick Dana. Okay, um, one of the things I wanted to, to talk about or ask, I'm looking for ideas, I want to put together some gift back, packets, uh, for the four, uh, people from Alleghys who are visiting this weekend. They'll get here late Friday night, uh, and then, uh, Luke has put together a, a very nice, uh, event schedule for them. When they leave here, they're gonna be totally exhausted, but it's okay. Uh, but I'd like to, I'd like to give some, a gift basket to them, um, and, and so I'm open to suggestions. I have some things ordered and underway, uh, that are supposed to get here on Friday, I hope. Um, any thoughts? Lead bill kind of things. No, no shamrocks, no shamrocks, they're not allowed.
What are you looking at for like a price cap for these gift baskets?
I hadn't thought about that, I'm thinking a little stuff, I'm not talking about anything extravagant, you know, a sticker or a button or a patch that's, that's lead bill centered. That's all.
You can't get more lead bill than a Melantana hat.
Or what about a, a, a belly? We could get a meat chowbelly.
A hat.
Okay. Yeah, that's good, that's actually a pretty cute idea, I like that.
There's some. Also has really good socks, just gonna throw that out there.
I have some of their socks, they are really good socks.
Really good.
Moreno wool, yeah, those are nice.
They're also branded.
There's some awesome leadville centric stickers that Harper Rose too.
Okay.
And, uh.
That's true, they have all kinds of stickers there, don't they?
And Alpine Furniture has good stickers too.
Okay.
I, I enjoy.
Hence the.
Oh. I like the coffee from City on the Hill to give it as gifts too. It's a mess though.
Okay.
I mean, that's something that they can bring back, I think, on a plane, right?
Here's the problem. They don't drink coffee. They drink.
I do, wow.
Black tea, to be more specific.
Don't drink it in a mug, though, right?
Oh, mug.
A mug!
There you go.
You guys are full of good ideas.
You could drop some ibuprofen and electrolyte packets in those gift bags too, just, you know.
You might wanna buy a Mabala oxygen.
Now that's so appropriate, pretty funny.
I like all the ideas, ideas that have come up, I would only add maybe, uh, those wood engraving things that, uh, Peter Frickholm makes that are like.
What I've ordered for them are the, the things that Ned Warner makes, that basically the, 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 the larger versions on canvas of the sticker that he sells with, with the, with the multi-colored city and leadville at the top. So that's what I ordered for them.
Cool.
Okay, well, if you think of more ideas, please let me know. And for departments, is there something from your department you think you'd like to have in the bag? Um, fire extinguishers? I don't know, snow shovels? I'm sorry, what? That might be, that might be a cool thing. Alright, I just need four.
I'm getting a line for one of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many do you need? Uh, five, no, I'm sorry, four. I was gonna go for Lori.
I have, I have to earn mine.
Alright, um. Next up, public comments, like, not as, I was not on the agenda, if anybody in the public would like to come up and speak to city council, uh, introduce yourself, your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Carl Schaefer, two nineteen Allen Street. My comments are and requests are cheap old tonight. I'd like to comment also on the, the street department and I think they did a pretty good job this year with regards to snow, but that is what my, my, uh, comments are this evening. For some reason, about a week and a half ago, the police department was utilizing the parking lot across the street for a few gates. And we got some snow during that time and I know the city crews always clean out that parking lot, they do a pretty good job of that. But that week of those patrol cars parked there, they managed to only be able to plow right in front of the valley off the north side of that building's roof. I keep that valley clear of snow so we don't get an ice dam. But due to the fact there's a big pile of snow there, I can't get into there, I've got an ice dam forming and I need to get in there, but I can't with the ladder because of that snow pile, so I would request that maybe we could do that, please.
The, the pile itself?
Yeah, pile itself right there.
Tommy's, Tommy's taking, taking it down.
Generally speaking, it's always gone, for that, for whatever reason that we need to park there, they couldn't clear it out, so.
I do have to tell you, it wasn't clear to me why they parked over there, does anybody, uh, Lori, yeah, please?
I believe that they wanted to, uh, it had to do with ski drawing, I believe, that they, they needed some extra space for vehicles for the weekend, so I'm not, I, I know, are you talking about right by the chambers?
I guess that's what the case is.
Yeah, I, I think that they were just preparing to save our lot for if there's other jurisdictions who came to help us, they have room to park.
And as a result too, that weekend, it smells kind of rather strangely that weekend. The state clearing the highways, they piled a bunch of slush right on, across the street that turned to ice and, and due to the runoff now, it's running out of the sidewalk and the church and I'm a mess trying to clean that up.
I'm sorry to hear that, but it's happened all over the city, this is, this is a melt-free cycle, we see it every year, but this year it's been, it's been annoying.
Okay, and then the one thing that I'd like to, with the senators, be to which regards to snow removal, I don't know if it's been practiced in the past years, but being, the, being that I've served on the, uh, Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation Board and the city owns that building, snow has been piled up against the east wall of the upper house. And I cannot tell you how much damage that can do to that building. Specifically, the stage floor is below grade of the alley. And there is a, there is a downspout that comes off the northeast corner, which is buried now in snow and ice approximately this tall. Every spring, water infiltrates that wall. We have an historic cement collection that's stacked against that wall, valued at over two and a half million dollars. Water permeating that wall will get to that scenery and it will, it will devastate. So my request is that in the future that they pile the snow away from the wall as opposed to against the wall, and if it's at all possible to clear that out before we really get a lot of melting and devastate that wall with, uh, permeating water. So those are the requests I have and that's what my reasons for coming to see the council.
Mayor, can I address that last point?
Uh, well, the, the, the east wall, which is the back of the Tabor Opera House and.
I, I have a response, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, so, uh, I got a lovely tour of the Tabor Opera House from Tammy Tabor and I met you at that, and she did mention it, and so the streets department head and I have already talked about it, and so it's already on our list.
Marvelous, thank you, I didn't know it had been, so, uh, I do know that Live On Fitness has done an excellent job this year.
Have it.
And that helps a lot as well, if we can just keep it off that backside.
Thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Thanks Lori, thanks Tommy.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there anybody else who'd like to public comments? Come on, Luke.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Luke, thank you for, away West Seventh Street. A couple things quick, first of all, to you and now for the police reform, uh, the talk discussion of freight on Friday night, I thought it was very informative. And it was great that we had some very current events and we could talk about how these reforms and these practices might be in place, I thought that was, I thought that was really good. The parade is Thursday, four thirty in the afternoon, uh, we have applied and have been granted for the temporary road delay, we have had some issues in the past with oncoming traffic, northbound traffic, so still just making sure that that's on everybody's radar. Uh, parades at four thirty, we will have children and all sorts of people in the parade, so really looking forward to that road delay, uh, please on Harrison Avenue. Speaking of the Alleghys visit, we're so excited that you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, my wife Kathleen Fitzsimmons will be on Channel Nine tomorrow, uh, with an interview with Matt Renew, Channel Nine, that's great. And then we also have on St. Patrick's Day, speaking of the Irish Memorial. And then we also have on St. Patrick's Day, speaking of the Irish Memorial, we have Chris Parente from Channel 2 in Denver. Will be doing a, a segment on the memorial at 5:00 AM and 7:00 AM on St. Patrick's Day as well. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be three nice things on Denver television to look forward to. As for the Alleghys visits, we have sent over those cookies that you so talked about, Mr. Tharp. The cookies of trees that we are hoping, and we sent them directly to Ireland so that way they would have less to take home in their luggage. Also along in that, we have sent along copies of Ms. Fitzsimmons's book, Buying One, Vong Two. We've also sent along stickers and we've sent along, you know, fun stickers such as, "All Crested Buttes Needs Is A Good Climax." Historical bumper stickers that, um, you know, really show the history of Leadville and then this connection between Leadville and Alleghys would be my hope. And Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for starting this conversation as well with the mining museum. We would have mirrored, um, mirrored little areas in each other's mining museum, right? One of the cool things about Alleghys is that they have a copper mine museum. And that's just why the people who came over from Ireland to Leadville were considered highly skilled. Highly skilled miners in what they do because of what they do. So as you heard Mr. Mayor say, the Alleghys delegation gets in Friday night, the 18th. And then we have a full day on the 19th and then we have a full day on the 20th. And really what it comes into is on 20th, on the 20th, at Treeline Kitchen in the back from 6:00 to 8:00. We hope you can join us for a meet and greet. It'll be mainly just a cocktail hour, dinner on your own, you know, if you want to do anything, it's on your own. And just kind of meet everybody. We will have four folks, three from the mining museum and one teacher. And so this teacher, then Kathleen and I will take, you know, and show them the schools and look around. And so we're very excited about this. This is, it's just a huge weekend, weekend kicking off on Thursday. And then also on Monday, the 21st, we're also having another meet and greet down in Denver at the Celtic on Market, 14th and Market, owned by a local gentleman, Noel Hickey, who lives in Evergreen. Has been very, very supportive and instrumental and it's his good friend and business partner, Terry Brennan, who did the sculpture for the centerpiece out at the, at the Evergreen Center. So if you can make all that, uh, it's gonna be, it's very exciting Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. It's non-stop and it's a great way for us to.
Do you know when Liam is going to be delivered? Liam is the name of the, the, the character who's the sculpture of?
I do not know. Um, I don't think we want him up here until the snow has melted and we can get currently the, uh, sorry, Irish Never Colorado. Inco is making final adjustments to their budget and spending. So it would be my guess that it will definitely be before September. As of right now, Liam O'Sullivan, which is the name, the fond name of the sculpture, is being put together as it was cast in pieces. Hands, arms, elbows, chest, you know, everything, head, heart.
Where was it cast?
It was cast in Love, at a, at a, I'm sorry, I don't know the right words, but. At a fountain, thank you. And that would be, I'm not sure exactly which one, but yeah. Yeah.
Any questions? No, it's public comments, so it's not supposed to be a presentation, but too late.
Well, it's three months, it's three months, I'll count.
Two minutes and fifty-five seconds.
All right, thank you all so much for your work. Appreciate your help and thanks for having me for the city of Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave. You can stay for the whole meeting. Yeah, you better get out of here. Uh, anybody else who would like to speak to city council? Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes of March 1st, 2022. If there are no changes suggested, we do have a motion, please. Yes.
Can you remind me, uh, in the housekeeping matter, matters?
I was gonna do that in the, in the mayor's report.
Yes, member Tharp moves to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, March 1st, 2022.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. And it's, I'm sure you noted that, uh, council member Hill.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Hi, Tim.
I apologize for being late.
We, we were assuming you were buried in skis right about now, so.
We're buried in having no skis.
Yeah, well, that's even a better problem, isn't it?
Mayor, could you maybe check and see if any of those phones are, uh, Christian? There's a couple of phone calls, people that I don't.
Interesting. I can't read those phone numbers from here. If anybody is, is listening to city council on a phone, would you let us know who you are? It looks like we have two people.
Tim Bergman.
Oh, Tim, I see you're both, okay. And the other phone, phone call?
I don't know if you can hear me, but it's Christiana.
Oh, thanks, Christiana. Yeah, see, they're, they're, okay, they're both on Zoom and they phoned in. Thank you very much. But no, good, good catch. Thank you. Next up, we have the city administrator's report.
Okay. Great. First, I'd like to thank all the city employees for making Ski Drawing Weekend a huge success. I want to thank everybody, including the streets department, uh, police department. A lot of folks did a lot of extra work and it went without a hitch, other than one slightly intoxicated person. But other than that, it was, it was a huge success. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. I am scheduling council member one-on-ones. Uh, council member Lurtzen has met with me. If I don't have one scheduled with you yet, please check your inbox and I'd like to get them scheduled in the next two weeks. And the reason is that we have, I've done a lot of work on housing. I think that's one of our biggest issues. So I have been meeting with practically everybody who is involved in the housing issue. Uh, I have a meeting set up next week with the Housing Coalition and had a really great long meeting with the new housing director, Tim Bergman, Michael Yurman and myself. So there's a lot to be done. I'd like to meet with council members one-on-one and find out what your priorities are. I'm assuming housing is one of them. And in that vein, the idea is to make sure we're on track for the Department of Legislative Affairs DOLA grant money, which we're on a pretty tight timeline to make sure we're in line for that. It's $800,000 plus a $200,000 match, city and county. So, uh, working with Tim Bergman, County Manager, Michael Yurman, who's from the Southern Colorado Economic Development Division and our new, um, housing director, we thought it would be helpful to have some joint work sessions between the city and the county to make sure we're doing the tasks that we need to do to stay online, to be ready for that grant. So the proposed dates for a joint work session, city-county, would be March 28th. To talk about community guidelines. I think, uh, let's see, April 21st, talking about Regional Housing Authority. And then, uh, May 19th, talk about development strategies and housing programs. So if those dates are agreeable for the majority of you, that keeps us on track for being, being, well, doing what we need to do to make sure we're in line for that money and make sure the council and commission is informed about what we're, you know, what the plans are and approve the plans and make sure that we're doing what we want to be doing.
Is that a Saturday, 4/23?
Uh, it was, it was the 21st, April 21st, so March 28th, April 21st and May 19th.
March, what was it? March what?
28th.
28th, not the 29th, because we.
Right, and those would be at 6:00 PM unless.
We have a medium to 29th also.
Right. Yeah, I know it's cramming a lot in, but this, uh, you know, the timelines that are set are.
How long do you expect these meetings to be?
Well, I think I asked Michael that question and I think we should probably set a limit of two hours. But I think, yeah, I think an hour might not be enough, so I think maybe we should plan for two hours and, and be good about keeping it to that.
This would be a joint city-county?
Correct. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Lori, could you repeat those dates one more time, please?
Oh, uh, council member Green, we could not understand what, what that was.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the dates one more time, please?
Sure, March 28th. April 21st. And May 19th. Okay, so that, if that is generally, those dates are generally agreeable, we'll work on setting that up and figure out the logistics for that. One other good news, why I wanted to point out, uh, our animal shelter has been approved for a grant from the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund. And the grant is an amount of $1,000 for microchipping, which is really helpful because the animal shelter right now doesn't have enough money for that, so that's great news. The last thing I wanted to talk about was on March 2nd, the mayor and I attended a virtual Colorado Municipal League Training on, uh, managed parking. And I thought they made some good points and I just wanted to share them is that, one of the things is, we really don't have cities for the sole purpose of parking. We want people to get to their destination and they don't come to a city or town just to park their car. They come to go somewhere. And so cities can manage their parking, uh, and the turnover for their parking so that people can get to their destinations with certain types of things, enforcement, paid parking. But the idea that I think is right is that the parking, the short-term parking for customers is really helpful because what people do when they come is they tend to buy things and they need to get them, those things to their car. And so keeping short-term parking close to the businesses is, I think, one of the goals. And one of the things I got out of it was, I think, maybe in a long-term list, we could work on a parking management plan where we have an idea of broader goals and then specific tasks. And that is, uh, that's it.
Any questions?
Oh, great. The other, uh, thank you for reminding me, uh, deputy city clerk. So good news, we interviewed a, a, a very good candidate and have extended an offer pending a little bit of, uh, work on our end. But we're hopeful that that pans out and that we have someone within two or three weeks. Out of fairness, they would like to give notice to their current employer, so.
Are they a local?
Yes. Yeah, so that's good news. I think, uh, I'm hoping that we have help in the next two or three weeks. Yeah, so that's great news.
Anything else for Lori?
Uh, would you like us to respond about the dates?
Yes, let me get that so we can, yes.
They work for me.
Great. Okay, we got a thumbs up from council member.
I've, I've got them all written down.
Okay. I guess.
Tracy says, okay. Dana, how do you think those dates will work for you?
I don't know. I don't have my schedule in bed. I'll look at.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I know for sure I would not be able to attend the March date.
Okay.
And the age of one is uncertain, but.
I would say this, and I'm not sure of all, as usual. But I think three to our meetings is way overkill for what we're trying to accomplish there. You know, that, that's just a thought. I mean, you know, as involved as we are in this, I have a pretty good idea of what it is he wants to talk about and what it is we're already doing. Mainly for us, it's going to be an update of what we're already doing, uh, in, in relative to his timeline. So I, I just, we'll see. I mean, that's just a thought.
And actually, you know, that's a good point. We can, uh, discuss that in the meeting tomorrow and, and find out if that's, I, I do appreciate. We want to make sure we're using our time wisely. And I, I, you know, I'm, I don't know how much discussion, but each meeting will have a different topic. So it depends on how much we think time we need to spend. I think, looking at some of the concepts, community guidelines, regional housing authority, development strategies and housing programs, those could be weighty topics, but, so what, we can, we'll just put that on the list of things to talk about.
Thank you.
Lori, could you say those topics again?
Sure, the idea is on March 28th to talk about community guidelines. April 12th would be Regional Housing Authority.
April 21st.
Yeah, what did I say? So April 21st, that's right, April 21st, Regional Housing Authority. And then May 19th, Development Strategies and Housing Programs.
Chewy stuff.
Yeah, those are biggies. So. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tracy, would you like to talk to us about the Urban Nothorpe?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot I was doing this tonight, so I didn't bring any notes, but I'll wing it. We had our Laura meeting on the 10th. We did not have a quorum, so we have rescheduled for the 29th at 6 o'clock in hopes that we can just boom, 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 action items that we discussed. Because we have a lot of stuff to talk about and move forward with, so I hope you can all make it. We had two applicants for the RFQ and decided that they were both good enough to ask them both to, uh, come back with an RFP. One is a nonprofit corporation down in Lakewood, I believe.
I think that's correct.
And the other was the Chippy Housing Trust, so, um. What else do we talk about? And I would like to propose that we change the time so that we have. So maybe, would you mind coordinating that with at least city council to get like a
A consensus of?
A consensus of a good time where people can make it. Obviously, people have real jobs and they can't come to a mid-day meeting.
Council member Lurtzen, can I just speak on that point? Is Thursday afternoons is when the Forest Service makes sausage. I mean, that is when it seems that everybody's dialed in and charging before the weekend. And I feel terrible. I have made probably less than 30% of these thorough meetings. And one suggestion I may have is if we only have regular meeting, scheduled meetings every other, the first and third Tuesdays, perhaps we can use one, the Tuesdays is a work session, one is Laura, in the same regularly scheduled time. And just make it so that we're meeting every Tuesday as we're, as a suggestion. If it is on, during the work week, it's very challenging for me to, to make it. And I know that's my problem and not many others.
But no, I think it's generally a problem. You know, this is, this is a de facto volunteer city council of people who work. You know, so I, I like that idea.
So the proposal is the second and the fourth Tuesdays?
Just one, because it's monthly.
Second or.
Yep, there's a work, we usually have a work session.
We try to have a work session each month.
Every month. And then there's usually one Tuesday that we don't. And in some months, we have two Tuesdays off, like this one, because it's just the way the Tuesdays fall. And so I think that would be a, not, an idea to kick around and see if that works for other folks.
I like it and that would, I'd rather just plan on Tuesday nights or the night.
We're gonna be here every Tuesday night. Yeah, that terrific idea. What do you think, Tracy?
What about council member Hill? Are you okay with that?
I can certainly make a Tuesday night, work a lot better than a Thursday afternoon, for sure.
Good.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Any preference for the second or the fourth?
I would say we tend to have work sessions on the second Tuesdays.
Oh, but, go ahead, I'm going, I just laughed.
But I don't know that I have a preference. But maximum.
I'd just say, it's important, we should put it right to this, so first, second, third, we get it in, because if we have Laura, it is important to get through, if we continue, we've had this issue before in the past, that Laura has not had a quorum before, and it just kind of lags out, right, and so I just like saying, let's get it done early and often, the second Tuesday of the month would be my preference.
That means we would have one on the 29th, and we would also have one on the 12th, which is, I mean, if that's what we're gonna do it, that's okay, just.
Probably need to do, actually.
Every fifth Tuesday.
We have that town hall. What day is that?
That's party time.
The 11th, we have the Laura Town Hall.
Oh, we do, you're absolutely right, the open house.
Now, mind you, I will not be here until the 18th, so please forgive me for that.
So the second Tuesday?
I, I think that's just fine. Setting the regular schedule, I think, makes so much sense. I mean, that's what Sarah tried to do for a long time, and we arrived on the 2:00 on Thursday, but it just doesn't work, so. Christiana, yes, please.
Just a quick note for you guys, that I know Linda has been attending your Laura meetings, if you change to the evenings, a Tuesday evening, it might need to be me that attends the Tuesday meeting instead of Linda, because Linda has meetings on pretty much every Tuesday night.
We'll check in, and I don't see any problem with that, but Lori and I'll discuss that, we'll get back with you.
Sounds good, I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, well, we can discuss it more on the 29th and come to a final decision on that.
I would like to say that April 11th, to me at least, is a huge deal, and I think you guys have an idea, most of you do, that I started working on this Urban New York Authority before I was mayor, year before I was mayor, I was attending DCI meetings on Urban New York Authorities, because I had already talked to that, to the developer, and it seemed to me that it was a huge opportunity for our city, I still think that, and I think this is finally where the rubber hits the road, where we can invite building owners and building, and business owners in to talk to us, and, and really help them understand, how do you apply for this as, as a building owner to do a development in your building, and what is, how much money potentially is on the table? I mean, I don't know, I want to say this to them, but over the next 25 years, the numbers could be in the tens of millions. You know, we heard that Phase 1 was $12 million, and we haven't even gotten, you know, projections on Phase 2 or Phase 3 yet, so big numbers, and I'm excited for the future of my bill because of it, so I'm really looking forward to the 11th.
So the 11th is Town Hall for business owners to come in, there'll be, you know, boards for explaining, and then I think at 6:00 or, no, 5:00. And then at 5:30, there'll be a presentation, so, and I believe the EDC is helping to get the word out on that.
We just met on that today.
Along with the city, so.
Great.
Yeah.
So that's a Laura Open House event.
Town Hall.
Town Hall on April 11th.
At 5:00.
What Nancy and I have talked about, if I might, is I want to go directly to business owners personally, and building owners, where we can, where it's possible, and literally hand them that flyer and explain to them how important this is, and that's, that's the intent.
Because I've just worked about it for a couple months now. You know, it's really important to go to actual walks, and even just the idea of being able to share that, but it's just more, more that we have to offer to help.
Right. Again, I forgot to bring notes, so did you have anything else?
You did a great job, I mean, yeah, those are the things we discussed last week. All right, thank you. Okay, any, any questions for Tracy? Great, thank you. At this time, we have department reports, police department report, we do not have a presence from the police department. You and I may want to talk about that tomorrow, but we do have their, their report in front of us. I mean, the latest update I can give you is we have two people in the academy, you already know that, Will and Maria. We have four CSOs currently in the police department. One of those is, has actually been to the academy, but has not taken her post certification test. Then we have four, right, currently we have four officers, we're planning to send four officers to the academy in May, you know, at which point we will be fully staffed, once they get out, then they have to go through field training, it's a very, very long process. Not quite as long as the fire department, but still long. And the last thing I would say is, is Hal is going to his two-week academy, and then he gets to challenge the post. He, I don't know if you're somewhere. But anyway, he will be gone for two weeks in April to attend, attend the academy class that he's required to take to recertify himself under votes, at which point he will be able to be a chief.
And I just, just another couple of updates, I thought that it went very well, the Sheriff's Office and Police Department worked really well to coordinate coverage for ski during the weekend, helping each other out really well, and that the other issue is.
Thank you.
Working on intergovernmental agreement between the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office, so that we can share resources, or at least work together in the short term. And then the other update is, Police Commissioner and I are going to go visit our two recruits that are at the academy tomorrow.
I, I'm going to assume that everybody's aware of some of what's going on with Sheriff's Office. I don't know that it affects us that much, but it puts pressure, you know, the sheriff has resigned, and is, is, and they, they now are down to three officers. Sounds familiar, but just, we'll see how it goes. The county commissioners have sent out a request for letters of interest for an interim sheriff. So, three people right now have declared that they want to run for sheriff, that is Hal Edwards, our police commissioner, also Caleb Craver, and he's expected. But they're both, they're both running as Republicans, so only one of them will be able to come out of their primary and actually be on the ballot. And there may be more, but just those are the ones I know.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just a question, is in the past, when Chief Petolus was here, and it was a different reporting structure, right? So I do really enjoy these bar graphs, right, however, I've noticed, on this one at least, that for the month, there was only nine total calls for our police. It seems that that has taken a significant drop from perhaps the, the list of different, I don't know if they, these include CIS, or how that works, but the way that this reads to me is that there were nine total calls with four being dubbed at large. And so I'm just wondering if that's the, how that works.
I don't know, I mean, I haven't stayed close enough, Lori, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, we can find out.
Okay, that's, that's why we need department managers here, so we have those questions, we can ask some questions. Any other questions about the police department? Okay, hearing none. Next up, we have the Fire Department.
Here you go, buddy. Just a couple of things with the report itself, we have three new residents, four new reserves. A few of those are from the Fire Academy. One was a return from someone that was in our Wildland program, left for a season and then came back and joined our, our program again. So that's the update on the reserve reserves, we were awarded the state grant for fire fire season prevention, for the extractor for Station 2, that's the machine that runs at like 450 Gs, to be able to extract per city units out of our, all of our bunker gear and so forth, many of Washington, that's 15,006 13 for that machine. Now we just have to figure out how to bolt to the floor and everything, we want the whole station to shake. And then, I apologize for not having a monthly report from Chief McCann, the newly operations chief. He is kind of getting his feet wet and kind of diving in completely within his role and everything that he is doing. Will mentioned that he's been working with CMC because the position kind of changed a little bit per the intergovernmental agreement, he's working on the associate degree track rather than the Fire Academy. Currently, right now, Fire Academy will go back to kind of how it was ran before with lead instructors, and we have one locally who works at Yule River. So he's just kind of taking on those roles, he's reforming all of our programs and how we're going to change how we conduct business, because image trends and the new software that we want to, we'll be able to track a lot of inventory, and be able to track all of our calls better, so you'll see better statistics once that's brought onboard, if you will. Zach Sleski's doing a wonderful job on setting up that entire software process for the, for the department. So he's just working on a lot of things that, because we're kind of a newer organization with a lot of loss at the veteran level, and everybody bumping up in their positions, so we're kind of just revamping, keeping the culture, but like fine-tuning that culture, and just being able to bring the organization even more forward, making sure that everybody understands where they're at in their new positions, so he's taking care of all that. I don't want to take much more time on the report itself, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, because next I have a presentation on.
Any questions for Chief David?
So you'll see in the packet itself, just ask the, for itself, there's some pictures of that. Say, pardon. Give you a little bit of backstory, when we were out there, I had to build a discussion on, that's when you go back. That will be functional for your community. I saw this on the floor, and I asked John Vina, I said, what are you doing with that? He said, well, we're building it as a demo, and then COVID happened. And then, we hadn't gotten to it, because we went from two manufacturing companies into one bigger facility, bigger facility. So it's just been kind of on their, their build list for some time now, and I asked them, well, let's talk about this a little more. I think it's an opportunity. As you may remember, the Type 1 currently that we have at the app, it's a 2016 Pierce, and that, that piece of equipment is Type 1, costs $670,000. That was to spec it out specific to the county. Now, as you know, we're not just an engine company, we're a truck company, a rescue company, hazmat company, all of that, so we throw all of our pieces of equipment, and we need some of those specific duties on that big piece of equipment. Well, come to find out, it's a little too big for what we have, but we're also having and experiencing a lot of issues with that piece of equipment. We've heard over the years that we've had it as well, you know, it's a good piece of equipment, but our second view is not. So if you ever had a vehicle of 300,000 miles or more, it's probably in that range, and then add 100,000 miles to it. So it is, I've been told by our fleet services that we should take it out of our fleet, because it's no longer appropriate to serve our community. I know it isn't either. It's only one, one hour, one day, one week from being inoperable for our community, and that means we will not have a second view engine for our response calls.
What's a due?
First view, first view, second view, so first view is the first engine that goes out, that's not 2016 Pierce. And then 2002 Sutton is our second piece of equipment, so if there's secondary calls.
Okay.
Like, like today, for instance. Like right today, I've got statistics for those back-to-back calls, and there was, there was a day in there last year.
Sorry, hang on a second, Dan. Okay, did Paula mute herself? Thank you.
Five calls at the same time. One was a breast heart, head-on collision, medical, and I can't remember what the other two calls are. So that's two, that's two engines, one engine company trying to take care of five calls at the same time. Those statistics keep going up and up and up over the years, we're receiving those calls back to back. So it's imperative that we have a reliable piece of equipment, an engine to respond to those. As you see the packet, I mentioned in 2016, it cost $670,000. That was in 2016. I asked Sutton, what is their demo right off the shelf? They're at $600,000, that's in the day prices, and I'm pretty sure those are going as well, so the opportunity is $498,000 for a Type 1 engine right now, because they don't have anything to do with it, if they didn't have fire, they're just building a demo to bring it out to display, because the M U is going to get into the Type 1 engine business. And that's not to include the changes, normally there's about anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 in changes, but normally happens is to configure the piece of equipment. One thing we will not be able to do with this one is be able to put a different machineroo, and that's okay. If for whatever reason, two or three years down the road, we decide we need, we need to do that, because we're getting stuck everywhere, then we just definitely replace the grass, so. That's the only thing that this piece of equipment doesn't have, that we wouldn't spec down, it has a 15-hour GPM pump, which will at altitude go down to 1250, but, and we might lose some ISO points with that, but we're also getting a Type 3, so that'll give us a higher pumping, higher pump capacity to be able to bring that ISO rating back up, so I don't have any concerns about that. And it has 450 horsepower, we wouldn't get anything under 450 horsepower at the altitude, we just wouldn't be able to climb. So, there's a few options that we have discussed, Lori and Tim and I, and the mayor, when he was present, for, for a few meetings on this. Currently, right now, we have $204,000 in the fire control balance, and you'll see on this document that the lettered here. You'll see in the first portion of that, the current obligations for the fire control is in bold, and that total, first one, 101,0072. So that's what's obviously with the fire control balance currently right now. Then these other ones, four, five, and six, these are additional needs of the fire control balance. 7,000, 38, 42,000 for the Wildland program, 24,000, 111,000 for the additional changes to the Type 3. That total is 191,683. We have 100,000 of the city and county set aside, I think that will improve in the operational budget currently, that will ship over the fire control balance, so in, in total, when the fire control balance right now, we have 34,000. So in, in total, when the market mounts right now, we have three hundred and four thousand. I believe that we can put a hundred thousand down on a piece of equipment. And then Donald will drop in with her bags and you'll see that on the next page.
Back up, what is, what do you think the total price of the type one would be specked out the way you want it?
It would be five. That's without equipment. I'll give you the equipment here in a second.
And so the equipment's additional to that?
Yes.
Well, I, I need, I, what, I need to know what, how much we're going to fund. How much was your projection on funding?
So currently, we did five hundred thousand, just to get a rough number, because the total price of the vehicle is four, four ninety-eight. So with that, five hundred thousand, now that's before the changes, right? And I don't want to confuse you. That amount for the, and you'll see the number sixty-seven, for the five hundred weeks, it's a hundred and eight thousand in the budget. And for the first seven years, it's seventy-nine thousand in the operational budget. And that's based on five hundred thousand. So there'll be additional changes, just like there are when you build something, I'll respect something, I'll put a piece of equipment. So I'm saying it's probably roughly about five hundred and fifty.
Yeah. Can I, can I point of order?
Please.
Okay. Chief, you know, I'm a staunch supporter of you, right? And no, there's not complete here, so I'll try to make this a brief comment. When I arrived today, I did not know this, and when I was redoing my, my agenda items, it was, this was not part of our presentations or requests. And this is now something that I'm seeing for the first time, which I'm grateful that you're having this presentation that was on my, on my desk. The first time you're asking for a very large piece of equipment because of an opportunity to, on a visit to see our type three, which I'm awful. I understand we need to replace some of our fleet, but I ask you this is that I, I'm not going to feel comfortable making a decision today. I'll just say that.
This is just informational. This is the, this is the first time it's come to you, so this is informational, so you know where we are at it. You're not being asked to make a decision tonight.
And also, I will not be here again for, for personal reasons for almost a month. And the last time I was gone on a fire assignment, there was, there was a change that was made. When I came back, I did not know that we purchased a piece of equipment. And I don't want that to be the same situation as before, where I come back learning about something that's occurred while I'm in my absence. And the only reason why I'm saying this is this, is that yes, we need to probably replace this equipment. Is this enough to, yes? I'm not going to say what, I haven't had enough time. But also with all the changes, station two, the new personnel that we're trying to get onboard, the, the wildland fire program that you're trying to create, which I'm all for and support, I need to understand the big picture of annual projections for the cost of building this out in the next five years. Because right now, this goes for your immediate needs and not for your, your, your true needs in five years. And I cannot, this is something that is tough for me to digest in this type of, of way. And, and I do want to support it, but I want to say it in a holistic fashion, so I know what's coming down the pike in a longer duration. So we know how much your department is going to cost us, and that's just needed with good projections into our future for our community. I just, I, I just want to say that.
Okay, I appreciate it. And, and your point of order orders won't take it. You know, I think it's, it's because it's only presentational and there's no decisions asked for. The way the IGA is structured for the fire, fire department is, is different than anything else we do. And that is that there is a, a, a fire management board. And that fire management board then makes decisions around the needs and the management of the fire department. Well, even though it's a direct report to the city, and then they make recommendations to the city council and the Board of County Commissioners. So what you're hearing from Dan is also some things that I haven't seen, that I'm on the fire management board. So that, well, we've talked about some of these things, but, but in terms of the equipment costs, I have some questions about that. But we, we also have to remember how, how the system works under the IGA for the fire department between city and county.
And if I may just address real quick, it is very complex. The staff takes care of some of the new, bringing in response capabilities. The equipment itself has suffered for maybe years. So we're playing a catch-up game on trying to replace these large expensive pieces of equipment. Where we're trying to get in some kind of replacement plan so that it's appropriate, so that we don't have to continue to be reactionary for days to replacing these pieces of equipment. So, you know, it is, it is conversations that there had outside of here, but I'd really, really enjoy a one-on-one in a meeting with you at some point to kind of explain that bigger picture that you're asking for, go over the strategic plan and figure out, go over this apparatus replacement sheet. So that, you know, you can maybe put the puzzle together a little bit better, because I can, I can understand, you know, these and this about. And just be informed right now.
And my, and my process is, is we just passed a fiscal year twenty-two budget three months ago. And, and this wasn't part of it, right? And so it's a process that I'm asking for us to follow. What's to say Tommy is going to come in tomorrow and say, I just found the greatest ever sweeper for this, the sidewalk. And this is something we've been looking at for ten years. And it, we can amortize it for seven years and the down payment's fifty thousand dollars. And we can have another piece of equipment for us, right?
That is exactly what we do. We've done exactly that with the street department when we had a mini excavator come up. We made a decision based on the fact that it wasn't in the budget because we didn't know about it. And this is the same exact scenario. So we have to be able to make decisions on the fly if that's the proper thing to do. And you're in the middle of the process. You say you want the process, this is the process.
Well, this is, I mean, I know we have to be nimble. I'm just saying that it's, we're, the tax revenues are coming up. And yeah, that's great, but like, I still think, I wish Dana could talk, because I'm speaking at, by Dana is like being basically responsible for the city. That's what I'm asking to say, is that like, when we balance the budget for the year, we look at our projections, right? And what we think's going to come in and not. And to have such a large ask.
Well, to, to address that, I think what, what you'll find is the first question when any, any department head or anyone comes to me with a request is, is it in your budget? And so the county manager and I and the chief spent at least an hour and a half going over these numbers that are in front of you. And what, what it pencils out as, it is in his budget. So he can walk you through these numbers, but with the fire fund balance that's in place right now, plus a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund that will go to the fire fund balance, plus the numbers that we've run on a five versus seven-year lease. He will have the money in his fire fund balance to cover those lease payments. So the, and the issue I think is, is that I don't think anybody disagrees that the piece of equipment needs to be replaced. The question is, is now the time? Is this the right piece of equipment? And, you know, I requested that he bring your attention to this issue just for informational purposes right now, so it'd be on your radar. So this is essentially to get this issue on your radar right now, as, you know, we work through the numbers and it, this, this certainly isn't a decision-making. But knowing that you're out of town, maybe you and I can talk before you go out of town and we can figure out a way that we get your concerns addressed.
Yeah, and, and I'll just state it right now once again, just for everyone's clear. Is that I have no issue with replacement? What I'm saying is, what does this look like in five years? Because there's going to be twice the amount of individuals. What's the next piece of equipment we're going to need for station two? How does that fit into our budget? And how does that, how do we pay for your new personnel, your new shifts? All of this that we, that, that, that is something that, I don't know what that number looks like. I just want to make sure that we, we're not looking at like the fire department taking fifty percent of the balance of our, of our budget and street department getting, you know, a sliver in the minute, you know, like, we have to make sure that we have the money to do this. And Nick, sorry, you caught me on a bad day, I guess, because the budget is something that.
The bottom line is, this piece of equipment wouldn't require any additional money from a general fund that is not currently budgeted.
For this year.
Plus the monthly payments. Plus the monthly payments.
So we would do the down payment this year of the hundred thousand that the city and county set aside for capital. Is when, is something that we probably have to do a.
Normally, that would be a twenty twenty-three budget consideration.
True, last week we received a view of all of the June. Also, which, which could be possible. That's the only factor.
Gotcha.
Is that this, this piece of equipment would be done this summer, right? After the beginning of the year, before budgetary sessions, so.
But there might be leeway in the fire fund balance for that and might not need to come out of general fund.
Well, current, at the current state of it, with everything, all the other obligations, it will be pretty odd what we do at times. So if you look at the, remember.
I'm, I'm going to die. I'm starting to sound like Dana.
No, just to, just to ask the question, go further than, and I want to take a break. If you look at that apparatus sheet, when you look at how people are purchasing your currency right now. Type one engine in nineteen ninety-six, five-six, and nineteen seventy-eight, two of the vehicle is the only taxpayer dollars that have been paid on all of our equipment. And everything else has been fire fund balance or AMG grants or other type of grants, donations, et cetera. So we do everything that we possibly can to try to minimize the impact on the general funds of both the city and the county. So the street department, we're still, you know, the county, and have a whole fund for their services as well. We don't do it to put a flat spot on that. We're doing it because we care, if you don't do those types of things, we have the opportunity to do them. So.
Yeah, can I just make sure I'm understanding this correctly, Dan? So looking at, is this what you're calling the apparatus sheet?
Correct.
So the second row is second due?
Is it the?
Second due Sutton fire engine, E two?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's the one.
So that's what this would replace, right?
Yes, so it's engine two, the sixteen going second.
Okay, I see. So it's kind of bumped it down. Anyway, so it looks like you're, you were planning to make that replacement in twenty twenty-three, right? So just to make sure I'm understanding the value proposition, this was coming down the pipe for twenty twenty-three. But you've found a, sounds like a good deal and prices will likely go up by the time twenty twenty-three comes around, right?
It's just not a matter of prices, it's a matter of delivery times. If you order a new engine in twenty twenty-three, we won't get it until twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Literally two-year delivery times.
So, so if we were to wait until this twenty twenty-three plan, we might be disappointed that we didn't.
That's correct.
I see.
That's the other portion of the opportunity.
Okay. Cool.
Is the time there.
Okay.
And you'll see on the, the truck is actually about the replacement prior to.
The truck, the ladder truck one?
But.
Okay.
This one is the one that needs to be replaced first. The ladder truck itself, it takes care of the downtown corridor and those fires that we need elevated large streams. If they get outside of our, our handle of that block, building itself, or high rescues of some kind. In fact, we use it on the rescue. Downhole to do the rescue, my money fell down.
Oh.
Yeah. We use the ladder truck to set up a local area system. Use it for those types of things. A ladder truck is one point five hundred dollars. We're not going to do a brand new ladder truck. I've used ladder truck for our community, but because of the use that it gets. But our first two engines and our second engine, those are the primary ones that we use all the time. Those are the ones that really kind of need to be specked out or. You'll see in there, there's another one in that packet, there's another twenty twenty in there, five hundred thousand. It doesn't need any of our specs and it's a four-wheel drive. It wouldn't do any service to our community, and there's so much right now, I compare it to only fourteen thousand miles higher. It was so five hundred thousand.
So you're reprioritizing the ladder truck because you're using those first and second dues engines more often. So it's kind of like, maybe we don't get the ladder truck this year, that could get stacked in subsequent years.
Right.
What are you going to do with the old engine?
The old engine? The, the one that we want to replace?
Yeah.
Training facility.
Okay. And would it still be operable for calls down that way?
But. No, not, not calls, no. It'll, it'll just get beat the heck up even further than what it already is, that's training facility. So that piece of equipment and the one we bought for Valor in Summit County, those are the two. And we have an active eighty-eight, because we bought Band-Aids all along the way to try to level some wrong. All three of those pieces of equipment will be at the tree. So whether they're used for hose bed, training, whether they're used for getting off the apparatus, all those types of things.
Um. This is definitely not my expertise, so please excuse me if you've answered this question and passed. What will live at the second station?
So the second station right now, we have the Hamer to the south central region. It's, it belongs to the south central region, Hazmat two. We, we operate that because we have Hazmat techs and we take care of those five regions. The airline, which is a, a compressor trailer that's attached to it, that also belongs to the south central region. Nineteen twenty, model eight. The two type six engines, the type three. And then possibly, if there's room, we'll either do the type three here or the type one down there.
Okay.
The response. And then, you know, the elevators are cargo bridge, search and rescue, and the new ones.
Okay. If this, just saying, if this doesn't have a locking differential, you will get stuck up in Pana in the winter.
That's what the type three comes in.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I've, I've been all the stuff. Some winter comes soon.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the other, the other portion of this is the equipment piece. A lot of our equipment is old and it's worn out, it's beat up. It's way past its life. We're talking twenty years or so older than what we should have kept it. We have another opportunity, and that is to put a hundred thousand dollars on the least purchase amount to be able to least purchase that over a period of time, rather than having to budget for that operationally in the next year of like this, like this year, we put twenty-seven thousand in budget for auto extrication tools. Instead of putting in the operational budget, twenty-seven thousand, forty thousand, fifteen thousand, forty thousand, whatever. We can put it in this package and then it'll just be part of that over a period of time. And then this piece of equipment is fully equipped with good operational equipment for, for the community as well.
Next time you come to us, can you give us a breakdown of what equipment you're talking about and what the individual costs are?
I do, yeah, it's right here. I actually think that is, it's this one, it goes like, this right here. This is B and E type nine engine equipment.
Oh, I see. Got it. Thank you.
So and, and this is a full complement of, of equipment that resides on a type one engine. And it's at a hundred and forty-two thousand seven nine. So I think we'd be good to do about a hundred thousand, add a hundred thousand to this total. And then get that mis-purchased and then we can figure out what the rest of this equipment is. Like some of it, we could probably have go to the type three engine or also put on this engine like a, for instance. Or a barrel strator. Like if the type three engine doesn't need a barrel strator, then we'll take the one that currently have and put it on that. This is just a overall boost, so you can kind of get an idea of how much a full complement of a type one engine equipment would be. There's a lot in here, I have a lot of check marks online. Because I, I was checking and I was like, yeah. Because I was checking and I was like, yeah. So that's something to consider as well um on the full price. And even at that, even if we were to hit a hundred thousand dollar worth of equipment, we would still be under the price of what are just our piece of equipment that cost us in twenty sixteen. Would be under that price. By forty. By about twenty or thirty thousand dollars, still under. We'll pay that. So. Uh, is there any other questions? Were did I have to think that I covered at this point? I am going to give the organic commissioners a presentation, this information as well. And then we're going to meet again and and I'll I'll come back for some discussion and. Decision. I need to let them know soon, of course, because it's in production. Uh, they're kind of hanging their hat on whether or not we'll be purchasing this piece of equipment. And I've told them that I would, you know, obviously we go through my process, but. In fact, when I was here, John Glenn, the our sales rep, who contacted me and said that B and B is good with the equipment also. He added on that. What he did say is that if we did it that way, legally, the way that we would have to do is that they would have to load the equipment. Um, we also talked, you know, if we had a hundred thousand equipment, can they just write us a check at the end and we get all the equipment? And of course, there's up charges and whatnot. So he said that that would be we working six to twelve percent. So that would be a part of that hundred thousand. So we just attract whatever that is, twenty-s, twelve thousand, something like that.
Is there any chance that some of this or all of it could be in your twenty twenty-three budget? As opposed to, I understand the opportunity you feel like you have here to just throw it into the lease. Um, but what what if there are other options?
I mean, yeah, I'm open for a discussion on that. Um, currently right now. Right now, I'll just give you an example. So when engine one goes down, either one, so engine one was out for about a month. If, uh, I think it was some rear seal wrote. It got uh fluid on rear brakes and there was some other issues with it. And that cost about eight thousand dollars by the way, that that's coming. Um, that's that's kind of bad, but um, so it's either that one or the or engine two, they're flipping back and forth of being out of service all the time. So what we have, what we have to do is we have to spend man-hours to be able to take this equipment off of this piece of equipment and put it on this one. Because we don't have a full complement on it. So we're constantly switching this equipment back and forth on these pieces of equipment um to be able to just stay in service. And engine two, like I said, doesn't have a full complement. So when this one goes out, we go back to that calls that we had, we did a hell of a collision. On ninety-one, our structure fire came out. You know, obviously the engine has enough equipment for the structure fire. If it was any kind of different kind of situation, we may not have had the equipment. It's just important. Our airbags are probably about fifty years old. It's for that.
Okay. How much board do you have?
I don't I don't have anything.
Do we have any questions? Uh, for that? I I just have a feeling uh between the commissioners and city council, you may have a sharp offensive. That's all. Good thought.
I do understand that. Um, I guess I just have no comment.
You're free.
Uh, you know, while I pulled this in, I was here. With the mic, we do it for the experience of our firefighters so that we can have that kind of experience here at home. We also go to help out other communities, but the revenue is not due if we do get that. And in my monthly report, I don't know if you've seen the statistics of the numbers over, you know, ten years, decade of the chief. It's been about three, four, two million dollars. And we brought into this community, whether the grants, water, and wildland, etc. And up to this point, I really feel that we've been really good about being able to utilize that extra funding for opportunities like this. Because capital improvement is very, very important. They're a service to the population. So we will do everything we can do to be able to offset some of these costs. And our wildland program is only going to grow bigger and bigger because of what we have earned. So.
Any last questions for Chief Daley? Dana, anything?
No, thank you for the explanations.
Yeah, I hope to feel better.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Dana. Okay, next up, we have street department report.
Welcome up to February.
Tommy, come on up to it. Go ahead and come up to it. Okay, she can if they can hear. That's good.
The move has, um, so monthly report for February, we've uh had kind of not a weird winter for February. Um, didn't really snow that much and it's warm. Got some snow piling in. Um, did a lot more snow ice removal. Um, did a lot of uh equipment service, police vehicles. And, you know, trash is slow, is kind of slowed down, starting to pick up again. Um, February, I did get, there were some three lights that were down in front of the bank, uh, people or Pablo Bank. Got those fixed, uh, called the electrician company. They did it within a day. Now, so they got it fixed. There's other uh lights that need to be fixed. Um, but they're not. Going to be able to work on them till I get an okay from mayor on the next, you know, because they want to replace lines. The wires that run from.
You and I, you and I have talked about maybe getting some bids.
Yeah.
On wire replacement in those lights. I mean, we've tried to do the solar thing, didn't work out well. Um, I just don't know what the opportunity is there. I think it's it's probably the answer, but I can't find something. Um, are you working on getting those bids?
So I have another guy that's gonna send me some information. They'll give me another, you know, somebody else. And then I got people out of Buena Vista that that do. So, you know, I'll begin bids from them. As well, turning those into mayor. That way, you know, we have three people to look at it. And, uh, you know, uh, ski during is a little tough. Um, a lot of snow melted. We were running out of snow for ski during. And thanks to Ron Fresquist, uh, Lake County High School Maintenance Group, uh, they let us go on the old football field to pull out some snow, which up. Pull up. Um, you know, county help, uh, putting snow and removing snow off Harrison. So, you know, I really thank the county for helping out. About it.
Mayor.
Please.
Are you talking about redoing all of the wiring on here?
I don't know. We, no, well, I.
I mean, maybe you should do a formal bid.
We got a bid from Pro-Elective. This was about three years ago. They wanted fifty thousand dollars. And that's when I started looking for solar, for solar light fixtures. Uh, and I haven't given up on that, but no one seems that to have what we need. And Dana very properly pointed out when we were looking at, you know, we put those three up, the solar panel is right on the top. Well, when it snows, the solar panel doesn't work. Uh, thank you, Dana. You saved us. We dodged a bullet. But nonetheless, uh, we aren't maybe talking about doing, just going ahead, replacing all the wiring. Um, I told Tommy, if someone could give us a bid that's a little more reasonable than fifty thousand dollars, maybe, maybe if they could do it for twenty thousand, we could at least consider it.
Aren't there um formal bids that we can put out for government agencies? There's websites where you can ask for um bids on doing this, you know, write up the formal project and put it out there instead of word of mouth?
That's probably a good idea. Right now, we're doing, we're trying to get people to give us some bids on just parcels where we know we we need wire replacements like a third. You know, yes. I don't think I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
Okay. I have another question.
Please.
I heard that our electric vehicle charging station is free. Is that true?
Well, until we put a a uh. Dawn on, try to get hold of Jesus, who who does that, who sets up those those uh credit card things, but we haven't done it yet.
Do we have a timeframe?
Not really, but I think the bill last month was ninety-three dollars.
Room around town is go down and charge your car.
Yeah. Uh, actually, right now, it's the last two days it's set unavailable. And I'm not sure why. I was this afternoon, I was printing out some emails from from these guys I'm dealing with, charging Colorado. Um, because that's, that has to be my next point of focus. Uh, there there are two things I'm supposed to do, okay? And I just haven't had time. And one of them is to give them connectivity. Some sort of uplift because they're doing this all state and they want the gap. And the second thing is to get that charging, the charge card processed. So uh, we'll, we we're watching the bills to see if there's gonna be an impact.
Okay.
Yes, like the second, you're absolutely correct. That's pretty good.
All right, that's my question.
Did he go charge his car?
I don't have electric vehicle.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anybody else?
Tommy, thanks for the info. Uh, how's your staffing scene? Are you have positions open or are you feeling good about that?
So we still have position opening. Uh, you know, we had one guy apply. But he lives in Colorado Springs, which, you know, that wouldn't work for us. He worked for a school district. Uh, for Colorado Springs. Told him, you know, CDL, uh. Laws changed. He was trying to get his CDL through the bus bar out of Colorado Springs, because that's big dude, the school in there. Which would benefit him and the city as well for us not putting him through the school. Um, but now he's looking for a house here in Leadville, which he can't find anywhere to rent or buy.
Wow.
Hopefully, you know, he'd find something.
That's, it it's a problem all through the city. There there are so many job openings in Leadville, but you can't hire someone from outside the city.
What's what's crazy is, uh, I had a cousin that was looking for a place to buy, and the houses were going quicker than. Then he could put a a an offer on.
Yeah. Well, we have second homeowners, cash offers, um, and it's just hard to, and e- even if you could compete in terms of the timing, the prices are just. They're out of control. So it's, I think we're going to be in a bind in terms of of having enough people to do the job in Leadville, not just the city, but overall. Um, for quite some time to come.
May I make a comment on that just a little bit, uh, just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at? Um, I have a couple of personnel. One already lives five, five hours away. Then one's moving five hours away. The other one's gonna move down, way down south. Few to Denver, just to be able to live all together. Pretty soon, I'm not gonna have any staff that live here in Leadville, except for the people that have already been established.
That's why I've been so impressed with Commissioner Edwards, uh, the building of this police department with all local people. It's been quite amazing to watch.
So bring.
It it really is, isn't it? Anything else, Tommy? Any questions for the street department? Thank you very much. Next up, we have the animal shelter. Hi, Caitlin and Brenda.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so as Lori said, we were awarded the grant of a thousand dollars today, which will go towards microchipping of the shelter animals um prior to adoption. And then we will also be listed as the primary contact. So if any of the animals are found, let's say in Denver or Buena Vista. Um, and they can't get ahold of the owner, they have our information to get ahold of us, or a lot of times owners forget to register the microchips. Um, so if they don't register the microchip, then they can contact us. And then our current animals have changed, of course. So as of the eighth, we had the animals listed. But as of today, we only had four dogs at the shelter, no cats. Um, our cat was adopted. We didn't have any strays. They were all picked up yesterday. Thankfully, we have one dog in foster due to medical issues. He's still at the vet in Denver, so Planned Pet Hood, uh, Leadville is paying for that. And then we have one foster to adopt, um, and they will come in tomorrow to finalize that adoption. On, I believe it was the twenty-fourth, we have our pack, we had our pack for inspection and we passed a hundred percent. So there were no citations or violations. Um, we are short-staffed. Brenda does leave us this week. And we are still in need of a weekend kennel tech. So I have been talking back and forth with Lori and looked at the budget so that we can increase. Uh, the price from thirteen to fifteen an hour to a little bit more pending people's experience. Um, again, we are not full with dogs. We were previously, so thankfully we are down to four. And then for February's recap, we had uh two animals surrendered, six adoptions, thirteen impounds. No transfers in or out, eleven returned to owners, three unclaimed strays that ended up becoming animals that we put up for adoption. Uh, zero euthanasias, one foster and one foster to adopt. And then I did change the totals. It will say the twenty twenty-two totals versus twenty twenty-one totals. Um, and next month, I'll try and make sure it's like a screenshot of the full, so it'll, it'll be a little easier to read for the screenshot here. Um, we did go for our expenses um over on office equipment. Our laptop died. Uh, yet again, we were able to revive it the end of last year, but not this time. Um, so we worked with Dan and the mayor on getting a refurbished computer. And we had to get a backup battery and the protection plan. So that was the five thirty-three eighteen that you see in red there.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any questions for Caitlin?
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Caitlin, did you, is Brenda leaving for good or or just some time away?
Leaving to join the police department, so for good, for the shelter.
Oh, wow. Okay.
She's one of the four that we're going to be killing in there.
Okay.
Uh, I have a quick question. Uh, you know, you got a thousand dollars for microchips. How many, what what does it cost to microchip an animal?
Um, it's five ninety-nine just for the microchip.
So then, okay, and then do you have like a tool?
Yeah, it's a big needle, so we'll have the vets help us with that. We'll have to restrain the animals. Um, typically, we prefer to do it during surgeries. Um, however, most vets will charge forty to eighty dollars. Um, so that's why the the grant helps us because we can order our own supply.
That's great. How many animals do you chip a year?
Um, we would chip any of the animals that are up for adoption. So I believe last year it would have been around two hundred, a little under two hundred, I think. I'm not quite sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for Caitlin?
I was, I was just gonna say, I I did get a tour of the animal shelter uh yesterday, and I was very impressed with their operation.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Caitlin. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
Next up is the local licensing report.
Well, Victoria sold?
Yes.
Oh, did they really?
Yes.
Do you know if they'll continue as a similar business or do you know at all?
I, I think it's gonna.
I, I think it's gonna be similar, yes, but the liquor license, uh, the liquor will, they will ask for the liquor.
And a change of ownership?
Yeah.
That's an interesting turn of events, isn't it? Because they just got that with the license. It's El Mercado.
La, La Victoria. It was El Mercadito.
Yeah. Five, five hundred pairs.
It changed ownership.
Unless the new owner applies for a license, that's one thing I'm just keep track of. But the old owner has surrendered that license.
They could, they have, they could have transferred to the new owner, right?
But she, she wanted to surrender it, so.
Interesting. All right, next up, we have a. Quick look at the building department. Pretty small numbers, really. Okay. Any thoughts on that? Uh, we have the sales tax, sales tax comparisons. We'd already touched on that before. You you look at it, then you look at the chart and go, holy moly. It just continues to to take off.
That's a little deceiving. So the actual sales tax in February for the city was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. It looks like the treasurer is catching up a little bit, I would say.
So how, can you break that down first?
Um, I believe you get a spreadsheet.
I did forward those numbers to when Tracy sent them to me the other day.
So just, so why is it, why is it say two ninety-nine in this?
Because that's when I received the check from Patrick. So what they received in February will receive in March. Or in April, I mean, and it'll go into the March total, because that's what their statement says, is that it's a March report.
So what you're seeing here is December taxation.
Money she actually receives, and what I report is what the state says we got in the month of February.
Yeah. But those are December collections.
So this is remitted in February from December. Gotcha.
But there was a seventy thousand dollar.
Different.
Some sort of back charge or? You say catching up?
Yeah, I don't, I think the numbers just might look like that. I'm not totally sure, because honestly, I received the check from the treasurer. Within days. Of the, the, the type, the report from Crystal that says, or Tracy, of what the sales tax numbers are, were, are, are. So basically, the county, I mean, bottom line, the county is holding our money for a month, basically. Because they got their money in March that they'll give to us in April for February numbers. But I don't have those in the bank yet. So I, you know, it's, it's so confusing.
But the numbers on your chart are in the bank.
Yes, those, that two hundred ninety-nine is money that I received in March. On the count.
And usually March the eleventh or twelfth.
Right, yeah.
And, um, for prior years, are those numbers the same? Like, are we comparing apples to apples for prior years? So.
Except that I took out the marijuana tax out of this one, which I made those notes at the bottom, so. The marijuana taxes, about fifty thousand a year.
We've always had those together, and Dawn and I last year decided in twenty twenty-two, we're just not gonna co-mingle those in terms of reporting. You know, at some point, you're not getting a direct comparison year over year, but it's like a six thousand dollar difference on average, so. This will be a lot cleaner. Okay, uh, next up, we have the financials. Uh, when you get into the second month of the year, all of a sudden, you can start paying attention. First month of the year, it's, doesn't do much good. Has anybody looked at the financials? Do you have any questions about them for Donna?
Are we, um, are we getting any two-way money yet?
No.
Okay.
We will. In fact, we have a training with New Rems tomorrow on the final step of how this is all gonna implement or. Whatever the word is, I'm sorry. Um, of how New Rems is gonna handle this. Um, they will not start the collections on those until April first. And then they have until April thirtieth to pay. On that, so I would assume that most people would have been waiting till the middle of the month, end of the month.
And those are quarterly, uh, so April will be the first, first collection we do.
Okay.
I've done a, you know, we're sixteen point seven percent a year. I do my down and dirty analysis. Uh, the police department is at twelve point one percent, and then because they're not fully staffed in terms of, uh, in terms of their, uh, employee costs. And then, uh, uh, animals, oh, sorry, I skipped over the street department. Um, street department is at thirteen point three percent. And there's, they're, uh, they're funded for seven people, but they only have six, so that's why that happens. Uh, animal shelter is at fourteen point three percent, and it's sixteen point seven, and that's because they've been down a kennel tech for, you know, probably the last month, right? And then fire department, uh, is at fifteen point five percent, uh, gets sixteen point seven percent of the year. Um, I think that may just be due to the fact that they have a fourth seat, but they didn't get to fill it until about a month ago.
No, because that's coming out of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not even in the budget. You're absolutely correct. The fourth seat is a grant, is grant funded, yeah.
Never mind.
Anyway, I I've highlighted a few things where where they're over budget. You know, sometimes that's, that's, uh, a call seasonal. Sometimes they have expenses at the beginning of the year, like for the street department. We'll pay on the one, one loader. We, we, either a loader or dump truck. We pay the entire amount, like fifty-one thousand dollars in January. And so it kind of skews another sort of rest of the year if you're not looking at it correctly. And then sometimes memberships, training, some things like that happen earlier in the year rather than later. Uh, the main thing we're seeing right now is gas and oil. Really through the roof, and especially for one department, which I'll discuss with Lloyd. And, uh, you know, a little bit of a red flag, but, uh, overall, the financials early in the year feel great.
I wrote, I just wanted to say that the county actually owes us. About two hundred thousand dollars for the fire department. They haven't paid January or, well, I haven't billed for February.
But they're always running two, two months behind.
Yeah, so just wanted to put that out there.
That is true. If you look at that, you'll see zero revenue year to date.
And I wanted to say also that I am, um, keeping a close eye on the fuel. Of documenting when, what times those are coming through. I just wanna make sure that there's nothing fishy going on, so I'm gonna keep a close eye on.
We have talked about asking Acorn to put in a camera system. So, you know, we've, we've thought about asking Acorn. That's where, that's where we get our fuel. Um, at a discount, but we've, we're thinking about asking them, put in a camera system. And for each transaction, give us a picture of the license plate. Uh, I feel like we're kind of exposed. If there's gonna be any kind of abuse, that's a classic place for there to be some abuse. Of employees going and putting fuel in the car. And I, you know, I don't think that's happening, but I don't really know.
Do you mean, are you referencing that the street department's gas and oil is at forty-one percent compared to sixteen percent?
They're all over.
Yeah, but forty-one's quite a bit more.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there some sort of use report that equipment has to have for their, uh, for every piece of equipment and driving where they?
The answer is technically, that's true. If they always kept the same card and the same piece of equipment, you could be assured of what you were looking at.
But you can do a log book, that's with the vehicle.
Yeah, is there a way, is there a log book per vehicle kind of thing?
Uh, not that I know of. That's actually a pretty good suggestion.
Because they, what, I mean, once again, just drawing on my own experiences, that you have a log book, a monthly log book that they put in, who's the driver? How many miles they drive each day, how much gas they put oil in, and then any receipt that they have for that vehicle, it's, it's an envelope. And it has, you know, thirty days on one side, you put your receipts in, and on the other side is actually a preventative maintenance check. So every month, when you turn it in, you go through your entire vehicle to make sure that things are working, oil changes up to date, you know, all that kind of stuff, just to. If you're really concerned with it, there, that is one option.
I don't know how concerned I am, but I I I'm concerned that I I have no visibility. That's my concern. That's a good, good suggestion. We'll see where we go. It's a point of conversation in terms of. All right, anything else for the financials? Thank you. Todd, face the bills. On page two, we see that the, the fire department went ahead, rebudgeted their, their software. Go ahead, purchased eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. We, we've had some distributions for American Rescue Plan. I also sent a report to Dola. Christie given it ass. It wasn't, it wasn't, she just wanted updates from all, everybody that she deals with. About how they had spent American Rescue Plan thus far. We, we, we've committed a hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, I think it is. Uh, from our American Rescue Plan funds, which is a total of seven hundred and twenty thousand. We'll probably be receiving the three hundred and twenty thousand this next month, right?
Well, it looks to me like we'll receive in June or July.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, what'd you get on that? I mean, did, did you get some sort of a, a notice on it?
No, I went back and looked at the original when I applied for it, when it was being distributed.
Thank you. If there are no additional questions about the bills, I would indicate a motion, please.
Council member for Gency moves to pay the bills.
I second.
Any other discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dana. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all, we're in favor. And now we have second readings on ordinance three, ordinances three, four and five. So since these are second readings, they are also public hearings, and we will go through our process. Uh, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number three, series forty-two, in order to amend the Title Seventeen, Leadville Municipal Code. To add a formula business exclusion overlay district. Say that three times fast, and related formula business regulations and amending, uh, the official zoning map of the city to reflect the boundaries. Of such zoning district, which council is considering on second reading. City council adopted this ordinance on first reading on March first of twenty twenty-two. Because this is the second and final reading of the ordinance, city council will follow these steps. First, I'll ask the city staff to give us a presentation to provide any information they have to city council about the ordinance. City council will then have the chance to ask questions of staff and have discussions with staff during the staff presentation. Next, I will invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Any number, any member of the public who wishes to speak on the ordinance may speak one at a time, and each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. Finally, council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. At this time, I would ask for the staff presentation. Christiana.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, good evening, city council. As a reminder, this ordinance number three, um, as the mayor said, establishes a formula business exclusion overlay district. And it also adopts some related regulations about formula businesses. The formula business, um, exclusion district. Uh, encompasses the retail core and a little bit around of the adjacent parts around the city's downtown. Um, that the boundaries of the proposed formula business district are shown in exhibit A to the ordinance. And within the formula business district, um, formula businesses would be, if this ordinance is adopted. Excluded or prohibited from locating inside the formula business exclusion district. And then as far as the, uh, formula businesses outside of the formula business exclusion district. Um, the ordinance also adopts some regulations allowing for formula business to locate in the, uh, commercial zone district. Um, and following amendments from first reading, the transitional commercial district as conditional uses. And so the ordinance establishes conditional use criteria and approval processes for, um, outside of the formula business district. Uh, at the March first public hearing, joint public hearing between city council and planning commission, there were a few things. Can you guys still hear me? Your, the video went dark.
I can hear you.
Thanks, Dana.
Little concerning, we're not hearing from the room.
Yeah.
Show us your dog.
It's my dog. My little cocker spaniel.
Hey, Christiana, this is Tim Bergman. I texted Lori to let them know that they, uh, they went dark on us.
Okay, thank you. I was just about to do the same.
At this time, it's seven fifty-six. Uh, we're gonna take a technical failure break. And come back in five, six minutes, and we'll see if, if this can get resolved.
Success.
It's been going so well for so long.
Christiana, can anyone hear us on Zoom?
That's a good idea.
We can hear you now. You came back, like, just as the mayor was saying that you were taking a break. Um, I can't see you.
Uh, we are still gonna take a quick break. I'm.
Later, son.
An hour's now.
I have no idea.
That's council members.
I got a message on the machine.
I didn't either. I tried to keep my feet way over here.
I know, I'm worried.
Yes.
I have a candy thing.
Use some of your brain.
I don't have a clue.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna reconvene here in a second. Can, uh, the people? Okay, we're going to, we're going to reconvene here in a second. Can, uh, the people on Zoom hear me right now?
We can hear you, Mayor. We can't see anybody.
Oh, you can't see anybody? No, well, that's just as well. Oh, now you ruined it. See, we were able to make faces until then. What, what we, I think the technical difficulty we found is that the city council members were wearing hats to dim enough tinfoil in their hats for proper reception. We're going to, we're going to try and fix that in the future.
Can Christiana hear us?
Yeah, she could hear us.
Yep, I can hear.
Now she can see us. Poor baby. As soon as Laura gets back down, we'll get started again.
Can I ask Christiana a quick question?
Oh, please do.
Hey, Christiana, just, just a question for you, just uh, before your presentation starts.
Yeah.
It's back, never mind. I'll ask later.
Okay.
Is, is, uh, seventeen decimal thirty six decimal zero three zero, the permitted and prohibited uses? Is that that chapter, that title?
Yeah.
That section, the next page has the same number seventeen decimal thirty six decimal zero three zero for enlargement or expansion of buildings, facilities, equipment and structures. Does that number have to get changed?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a typo.
Okay. I'm going through our directives right now in the forest service.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Making a world friend. Okay, it is, uh, eight oh five. We're going to get started again. Christiana, I'm sorry, we lost you in the middle of your explanation. So if you don't mind starting over, we would appreciate it.
I'm very surprised because I know how much you guys like listening to me talk, so. Um, can you tell me what was the last part that you heard?
Um, you were talking about basically the, the timeline. But no, I don't remember precisely when, when you went offline.
Okay, uh, so I, I think the last thing I, I remember starting to explain was, um, we talked, I talked about um, formula businesses being prohibited in the formula business exclusion overlay district. And then also how the ordinance sets up some regulations for formula businesses outside the formula business district, um, to allow for formula businesses to be a conditional use in the commercial and transitional con- commercial zone districts. Um, and then I think I was just about to start, um, going over the uh, a- amendments that city council, uh, requested and directed to be made at, um, the March first joint public hearing. So if that's okay, I'll start there.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right. So at the March first joint public hearing between city council and planning and zoning commission, um, city council, uh, requested and directed, uh, three changes be made to the ordinance. The first was that formula businesses be allowed as a conditional use in the transitional commercial zone district in addition to the commercial zone district. Um, which again, this is outside of the formula business exclusion district. The second amendment was that automotive repair services, that term be added to the definition of personal services outlet. Um, and then the third amendment is that a process be added that, so that non-conforming formula businesses in the formula business exclusion district, uh, could apply to the city for expansion of their structures or facilities. Um, so I will direct you very briefly to the red line in your packet of the ordinance that shows, uh, these changes. Oh, Dana says everything has gone silent. Can city council still hear me?
Yeah.
No, we can hear you fine.
Dana.
That is probably not us.
Okay. Would you like me to take a brief pause so we can see if we can get Dana?
Do you, uh, you're on mute right now. We're not getting the response from Dana. Dana, if you can hear me, let us know if you can resolve the, the volume issue. I have no idea what that could be. Computer volume, um.
Can Tim or Brenda hear us?
Yeah, Tim, Tim, can you hear us? Okay.
It's so weird how one person.
No, that's not it. I mean, you can't, you know, one, if one's here, then they should all be over here. Uh, Brenda, I'm sorry, you unmuted. Can you hear us? Okay?
We can't hear her.
I just texted Tim to see if he can hear us.
Yeah.
Because you're asking and he's not responding, so I'm assuming he can't.
Christiana.
Yes.
Because you can hear us and we can hear you, it's not our system. And so, and it's not a Zoom issue. It has to be somehow individual issues. Uh, but I don't know why. So.
Yeah.
Uh, if you would continue, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Um, all right. So I was directing, uh, city council to the red line version of the ordinance in your packet, which starts on page. I don't know if you have page numbers, but it's on page ninety seven. And you can see that automotive repair services um, has been added to the personal service, services outlet definition on, if you're looking at the top page of the redlined ordinances, it's on page three of the redline ordinance. Um, and then the, um, as, as Max pointed out, this, uh, there is a typo in the ordinance um, for the, um, expansion of building section that was added, but that starts on page four of the redline ordinance, again, looking at the top of those pages for the page numbers. Um, that should be seventeen point three six point oh four oh instead of oh three oh. Um, and so I can fix that. Um, but the enlargement or expansion of buildings, facilities and equipment or structures section um, is added to allow formula business owners in the formula business district who are grandfathered and to apply to the city so that they can, um, expand their facilities, uh, if they need to. Um, and this basically follows the procedure of a conditional use permit. The same procedure is followed, but different criteria are set forth for approval of those um, applications here in the, um, formula business section. So the criteria are in subsection D. There are one, two, three, four, five, uh, six, seven, eight, uh, criteria to look at for approval of those um, form, or non-conforming uses, those formula businesses grandfathered in, in the formula business district. Um, so that they can have the opportunity to either build new buildings, expand their facilities or install new structures. Do you guys all see those red lines and those new?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at them. I don't know if there's real soon.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so would you like me to go over the criteria? I don't know how much detail you need from me there. Um.
I read through them real quick. I mean, anybody want her to go through those? One by one?
No, can I just ask about, um, can I ask?
Oh, you, please.
Um, so in your recommendation, uh, Christiana, you said we should put the automotive sales and service under the definition of a formula business and take it out of personal services outlet, but that's not how it's written.
Right, right. It's not how it's written. Um, I, I included the changes that city council directed in the changes. And then I just added that as my recommendation to the memo for consideration. And so if you guys decide that you would like to, um, have that alternative amendment, um, then I had that in there, but I wanted to reflect what you guys had actually, um, asked for in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
Why would you have it in both places?
No, you, right now it's under personal services outlet and she's recommending that it be included in the definition of a formula business called out specifically.
Included in addition to that.
In addition to restaurant, bar, lounge.
Yeah, but in addition to be in the.
No, take it out of the personal services outlet and put it in the definition of a formula business.
Okay.
Right, right. And so I, I re- I'm recommending that for, um, well, for a couple of reasons. The, uh, you have in your table of uses, uh, the term personal services outlet. And you also have in your table of uses, um, is, the, this isn't quite the term, um, because I think there are some parentheticals in there, but you have an auto sales and services use already listed in your table of uses. And so if you put automotive repair services into the definition of personal, personal services outlet, then you'll have personal services outlet, meaning automotive repair services, and then also another use in your, uh, another term in your table of uses that relates to automotive services. Um, a- and so this recommendation is trying to, um, just clean that up a little bit and make sure there's no, um, repetition like that. Um, and so if you put automotive repair services or, um, auto, automotive sales and services in the definition of formula business, then those types of formula businesses would not be allowed in the formula business overlay district. Um, and the other piece of that recommendation is, um, that if you all want to make sure that there's no confusion about allowing electric vehicle charging station. Oh my goodness, I'm sorry. Stumbling over my words. Um, if you want no confusion about, um, the fact that you want to allow electric vehicle charging stations in the downtown core, um, in your retail core, then you can say explicitly in your definition of formula business that electric vehicle charging stations are allowed and they are not considered a formula business. So that's kind of the, the two-part, um, recommendation that I have for an alternative amendment. Move automotive repair services out of the definition of personal services outlet. Put it into the definition of formula business and then also explicitly say in the definition of formula business that, um, electric vehicle charging station is not considered a formula business. So that's my alternative recommendation. And then I did have one, um, question for you all at the, um, toward the end of my memo there, the background section of my memo. Um, after the planning commission considered this ordinance and, uh, before it came before you all, um, on first reading, there was the planning commission recommendation that, um, the, uh, let's see, I'm scrolling down to the section there. That section seventeen point six eight point oh one oh, talking about enlargement, uh, um, of non-conforming uses generally um, be clarified. Um, and so I had made some recommendations to clarify, um, generally speaking, what a non-conforming use um, is not allowed to do, and namely, they're not allowed to, generally speaking, again, not allowed to expand, um, not allowed to increase their intensity or degree of use and so on and so forth. Um, and so I had made some clarifying, um, language recommendations there. Um, and with first reading, you guys wanted to have a way for those grandfathered in formula businesses to expand, um, unlike other non-conforming uses. Um, give them some ability to do some limited expansion. So we've done that and I just wanted to check in with you all. If you still want to have those changes to seventeen point six eight point oh one oh about non-conforming uses generally in this ordinance. So.
I, I feel like that was consensus of city council. Do we agree with that? We wanted to have the ability to at least consider that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, Mayor. Yes, on what?
Well, the, the, the consensus of city council was we would like to have the ability to consider that, which would make it conditional, uh, for, for the expansion of non-conforming businesses.
Right, right. And that's the added language, the expansion or, right. Yep. But that's just for non-conforming, uh, formula businesses in the formula business overlay district. It's not for any other form, uh, non-conforming uses.
Are there any other questions for Christiana?
I have.
Do we feel like we captured what she has there?
Yeah.
Okay, Cisco, I'm sorry.
Oh, just one related to what you just said. So does the verbiage in section seven contradict the all the criteria in section seventeen point three six point oh four oh?
Uh, it, it, to some extent, yes, um, but we're sent, we're essentially carving out an exception for those grandfathered in formula businesses um, that will become non-conforming uses. So generally speaking, non-conforming uses aren't allowed to expand or enlarge or construct new buildings that, you know, make the non-conforming use greater. Um, but in the case of grandfathered in formula businesses specifically, um, we're allowing this process and, um, I, I talk a little bit about this in the memo, but there are some, uh, there are two kind of competing, um, goals in your comprehensive plan. One is to support and, uh, help existing businesses. And the other one is to preserve historic assets, um, within the city. And so this ordinance is really trying to find a balance between those two things because you're on the one hand, not allowing formula businesses in the formula business overlay district. And on the other hand, you also want to support your existing businesses. You know, there were, there was discussion about, I, I think it was Moe's barbecue, last time and I think in times before, and how they may need to expand. Well, they're an existing business and providing this um, exception to the normal non-conforming use restrictions, um, is a way that city council can help balance those competing um, comprehensive plan goals and still support your formula, uh, uh, still support your existing businesses while um, accomplishing the formula business exclusion goals as well. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Max? Well, similar, I just want to make sure I understand that in the new code in seventeen, because I'm still, I'm still, I'm still a little fog, foggy. But in seventeen dot thirty six dot oh four oh, in this new formula business exclusion overlay district, chapter seventeen point thirty six, we allow for non-conforming businesses to apply for, um, an expansion. That's one thing. Then another section of our code in section seven, chapter seventeen point six eight, it pretty, that's specific to conditional use permits. That says, hey, unless somewhere else, which it does exist, because we're putting it in this forward formula business overlay district, that that's how it's working together, two different parts of the code?
Yeah, yeah. So the, the section, um, the seventeen point three six point oh four oh, that would apply to the formula businesses that, um, are are currently existing and they become non-conforming uses once this ordinance is adopted because they're within the formula business exclusion overlay district. Um, and then that section, uh, seventeen point five two point oh seven oh for conditional use permits, that applies to any formula businesses that are allowed outside of the formula business, um, overlay district. Um, and so the ordinance is allowing formula businesses to, it's, it's prohibiting formula businesses from the formula business exclusion district. But it is allowing formula businesses in the commercial zone and the transitional commercial zone. And so those formula business CUP standards in this ordinance would apply to those formula businesses that want to locate in the commercial and transitional commercial zone outside of the formula business zone district. Does that help?
Those are stuff. Those are stuff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On page five, I have a question.
Okay.
Pull up point D three. Additional traffic generated by an enlargement expansion construction must be incorporated into the neighborhood and community transportation network. With what is that? What is a neighborhood and community transportation network?
Um that one is uh that one's basically uh can't cause additional uh traffic problems like traffic congestion a- and things like that. So if if there are any deficiencies um that exist around a formula business and additional traffic uh adds to that, then that would be a no-no basically. And again, like safety problems, more more traffic creating uh safety hazards or or things like that. They would have to show that they they don't create safety hazards and that they don't run into any traffic problems.
Would that be like a drive through?
It could be a drive through. Um and again, um they would just have to show that the traffic doesn't add to any problems or create any safety hazards.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Christiana or discussion? We'll get into the discussion. Okay, at this time, I would like open this public hearing for public comment. We would ask that any uh members of the public who would like to speak uh in favor of this ordinance, uh please let us know and you can come up, introduce yourself, you know, three minutes. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Let's move to close the public comment portion of the public here.
He'll say, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Uh so at this time, we are in deliberation. We can deliberate. Um we can also entertain a motion, but let's see if anybody has anything they'd like to talk about. I think you both asked the most the most perplexing question. Well, but the contradiction, contradiction twenty uh seventeen point three six point oh four.
But that, I mean, let me just get this straight. The contradiction is addressed with the red line or unless otherwise permitted by this code. Makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
I would like to move the automotive sales and services uh to the definition of a formula business.
Okay, you make that part of your motion.
Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion or?
We have it.
And we also want the motion that the EV charging stations are not considered formula business.
The motion has built into it with the amendments as directed by city council. Oh, but then we want to add all the recommendations that.
Two things we've talked about.
Christiana.
I only remember two.
That's all I got.
Can we have it say um automotive sales and repair services instead of just automotive repair services?
I was gonna do automotive sales and services. But you want it to be repair services?
I think services. Might be considered repair services. So I like your version.
Right. Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, good.
Okay, here we go. We're at the moves to adopt ordinance number three series of twenty twenty two and ordinance amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code to add a formula business exclusion overlay district and related formula business regulations and amending the official zoning map of the city to reflect the boundaries of such zoning district with the amendments as directed by city council with the following two amendments that the formula business include automotive sales and services. And second, that electric vehicle charging stations is called out as a not a formula business on second reading.
Thank you. Right here a second.
Five seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, please.
Just to clarify for the motion and make double and triple sure. Um the motion is intended to remove automotive repair services from the definition of personal services outlet and then put automotive sales and services into the formula business definition.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make that clear.
Great. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice work. The next we 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 will continue with the public hearing. It is still open? Yeah. Okay. What about Taylors? You do some more loon boil.
You haven't you haven't met the evil eye yet, have you?
Next item on this agenda is ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty two. Nordest repealing and replacing chapter seventeen point nine two of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning rezoning and zoning code amendments. Adding a new chapter seventeen point eight four, relocating the city's vested rights regulations and amending section seventeen point five two point oh three oh of the Leadville Municipal Code, which council is considering on second reading. Council adopted this ordinance on first reading on March first twenty twenty two. Christiana, you're up.
Okay, so this ordinance uh changes the process by which uh the planning commission and city council can make um text amendments and map amendments to the city's zoning ordinance, which is title seventeen. Your current code in chapter seventeen point nine two is what has your current process. And the current process um is is very outdated and cumbersome. It involves an lengthy referral agency period, um multiple public hearings um on uh on the part of planning commission, a joint public hearing with city council and planning commission. We we've just went through this process, you know, and then another public uh well, maybe not another another public hearing other than for second reading, but it's very long and drawn out, um and it doesn't need to be that way. So this ordinance was put together in order to streamline and simplify that process. Um the very basic version of how the new process would go is that if there is a text or map amendment that the city wants to make or a property owner wants to apply to the city for, then that change would go to the planning commission. Planning commission would hold a public hearing on it, make a recommendation, and then it would go to city council and city council would consider it during their usual ordinance process, which would have to include a public hearing as well. But it already does, so um those are the two big things. The other thing that this ordinance does is um it moves the vested rights provisions from chapter seventeen point nine two to its own chapter. It moves it to its own chapter seventeen point eight four. And that's just to give it its own space. It's currently in the rezoning and um zoning code amendment procedure section of the code. And I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to be there, so no changes to those vested rights provisions, but they're just relocated to their own chapter. Lastly, the ordinance also separates out um and provides a slightly different process for um tack uh text and uh well, text amendments, especially um if they are initiated by the city versus whether they are initiated by a property owner. And so it's a smart idea, especially for notice reasons and a sensical idea, especially for notice reasons, um to have those processes be a little bit different. And just so that you all know, one of the big differences between the two is that the city doesn't have to go through a a number of pre-application steps. If if the city wants to initiate its own amendments and as far as notice goes, um if the city initiates a text amendment, for example, under this new process, the city would need to uh publish notice of the hearing and I'm going to scroll down to the sections. I'm not saying the wrong thing, but the city would want to um post notice and if it's for a specific property uh versus a large project property, publish notice in the newspaper of the public hearing and um if it's a smaller property, then also send notice by mail or post post. Sorry, I'm getting my things mixed up. I'm so sorry. Here we go. Okay, for city initiated rezoning, the city would mail and post notices. Um if the rezoning, which would be a text amendment or map amendment, applies to a single property and the if it's for more than a single property and it's legislative in nature, then you just have to public publish the notice in the newspaper. So anyway, just a few tidbits of information and details about that ordinance. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, uh any questions for Christiana? It's interesting. We're we're going through the midst of changing, you know, this ordinance while we adhere to it. Yeah. Uh at this time, I would ask uh for public comment uh on this ordinance. Uh if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please uh come up, give us your name and uh an address and you have three minutes. Seeing none, if anybody in the public would like to speak in opposition uh to this ordinance, uh the same. Please give us your name, your address and you have three minutes. Seeing none, uh I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
No moves to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Just seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Uh at this time, we are in um discussion, deliberation. Any thoughts on this? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Fregency moves to adopt ordinance number four, series twenty twenty two. An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter seventeen dot nine two of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning rezoning and zoning code amendments. Adding a new chapter seventeen dot eighty four, relocating the city's vested rights regulations and amending section seventeen dot fifty two dot zero three zero of the Leadville Municipal Code on second reading.
He'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Thank you.
But wait, there's more. It's the gift that keeps on giving. Uh the next item on the agenda is ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty two. An ordinance amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning the regulation of family childcare homes, which council is considering on second reading. Uh city council uh adopted this ordinance on first reading on March first of twenty twenty two. I think Christiane kind of explained to this, this is uh was passed by the state legislature and that we're codifying of the new state law. Is that correct?
That's right. And so what this ordinance does is um establish a use in your table of uses that is family childcare homes. It distinguishes it from childcare facilities and tho- those daycare centers. And it allows family childcare homes as a use by right in every single zone district because uh under the state law, uh family childcare homes can't be treated differently than um other residential uses and residential uses are allowed in some form or another in every single one of your zone districts. So we uh just allowed it as a use by right in every single zone zone district. I think maybe Tracy mentioned last time that uh as I know in the memo and the in the city council communication form, there is an option for the city to manage traffic flow and parking related to adjacent large family childcare homes. I didn't include any regulations in this ordinance about that. It would be really complicated to do that, I think, and um it would, it could potentially involve uh large family childcare homes, you know, on regulating them on a first come, first served basis or something along those lines. Um and so at this point, I didn't think it was appropriate to include those types of regulations in this ordinance. But that's pretty much it. If you have any questions from.
Any questions for Christiana? Please, Tracy.
Speaking of that, the provision where we can prohibit on a case by case basis, how does that work? Do we have, does somebody have to complain or come forward to to make that happen?
Alright, okay, so prohibiting on a case by case basis, the operation in immediately adjacent residences of two or more large childcare homes, right? So it the the state law um to the best of my memory and I I can look at that in more detail if you'd like me to, but to the best of my memory, it doesn't give a whole lot of guidance um on that. And so the local governments would have to figure that out and so we would have.
I was afraid you're gonna say that.
Yeah.
Let's hope we don't have to make those decisions. Actually, we'll let Christiana make those decisions.
Wait, what?
That is interesting that they would put that in.
With no teeth.
Any other questions for Christiana? Okay, uh at this time, I would ask for public comment on this ordinance. If there's anybody in the public who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, uh please come up. Give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, if anybody in the public would like to speak in opposition uh to this ordinance, please come up, give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak. If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak, you'll just have to raise your hand or let us know in some way, shape or form that you'd like to speak. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Our moves to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
He'll say.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, we're in deliberation. Um the discussion at all? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
Our moves to adopt ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty two and ordinance amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning the regulation of family childcare homes on second reading.
We're at some second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh at this time, it is eight. Thank you. Uh, at this time it is eight forty-four and this public hearing is closed. Next up, we have agenda item nine D. Uh, this is resolution number eleven, series of twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the purchase of real property known as four thirty-one, fifth and Harrison. I did put a couple of things on the dais, uh, this afternoon because in here it, it says that we're basically, uh, certified uh, that we're not paying more than market value for this property. Uh, I've included a couple of things. Number one is the, the purchase settlement. And the other thing is the broker's opinion about, uh, relative to this property. Closing on this, uh, is scheduled for ten o'clock on Friday. Uh, as you know, this is, uh, I'm guessing we can get about twelve parking spaces in this, maybe thirteen. I mean, you know, it's, it's just a piece of the puzzle. But, uh, but I'm pleased that we picked this step. Any questions about the transaction?
Do we have title insurance on that?
Yes, we do. We receive the title policy.
Okay.
Yes, silly. We may have talked about it, I'm not sure, but, uh, since the contract to Christiana, she suggested changes as well incorporated by the, by the, uh, agent, uh, in this contract. So, uh, that went very swiftly. If there are no thoughts or, uh, additional discussion, I would, uh, entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember for Gentry moves to adopt resolution number eleven, series of twenty twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate, real property known as four thirty-one, fifth and Harrison.
No second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Do you have a second on that?
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember for Gentry.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have the public meetings planner. I haven't had a chance to look at, anybody have any additions, deletions?
So we have on the twenty-eighth, we have the housing meeting at six o'clock. On the twenty-ninth, we have the Laura meeting at six o'clock.
I did want to remind everybody that, uh, I leave Monday morning. And I'll be back, back next weekend. So I'll be back in the office on the twenty-eighth. I, I would like something that, that I, I haven't arranged for yet is, uh, getting the, and if anybody has any ideas, I'd like to hear them. And if they don't, that's okay. We'll figure it out. I need for someone to be willing to take the four people from Ollie's down to Denver on Monday. And I currently don't have an arrangement for that. We have a vehicle, uh, we're going to use that weekend, the police department. Has a Tahoe. It's a pretty, pretty good sized vehicle. So we have a vehicle, but, uh, and, and if nobody has any suggestions, that's fine. I have all, all week to figure it out.
It's Monday, the twenty-first?
Yeah. It, that, it's kind of an all-day sucker to go down there, drop off and come all the way back. I'm not expecting anything. I just thought I'd throw it out there. Thank you. Any other, uh, thoughts on the, uh, public meetings planner? Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Uh, I was going to talk briefly about paving. Um, I'm, I'm working on getting three bids. And we'll, we'll, uh, issue an RFP. It'll be, it'll be pretty basic. I want, I want to see if, if someone will commit to paving about fifteen blocks and, you know, we'll see if we can actually pull that off. And, um, and then what they would charge. And I, I'd want to bid by square foot. So that, because each street's a little bit different. And then I, I have worked with Parkville Sanitation and Laurie's working with Excel to try and get schedules. They've all told us they'll get them to us. I have, uh, from, from sanitation, a map of what they're going to do this summer. Pretty expensive. Probably sixty or seventy percent of it's in the Alice. But they're, they're going the entire length of pine. And so I'd love to, to include that in our paving if we possibly can and do a cost sharing within Parkville. When I was at their meeting the other night, uh, they felt the same way. They're, they're really interested in cost sharing. And this is especially true up on, on, uh, East Second Street, which we dug up last year. And, uh, sanitation and, and Parkville are done, but XL is not done on that street. As soon as they're done, we all go together on the paving on second, on the second street. That's from Toledo up to Alder. So that's it. I mean, it, it's, it's a work in progress. I can't really make a commitment to paving until I know what everybody's scheduled.
Are you talking about tearing up the road and redoing it? Are you talking about overlay? Are you talking about what kind of, I mean, those are huge.
Usually we're talking about tearing up the road and putting new asphalt down, putting down.
You're going to pull the whole road out?
Yeah.
Are you doing a hot asphalt or cold?
No, it has to be hot asphalt. Cold asphalt wouldn't hold up. And we're talking about, uh, you know, about usually six inches of road base and four inches of asphalt. Which meets our, our, our code for streets.
Mayor?
Yes.
We're going to go for fifteen blocks. Can we go for thirty?
Well, fifteen.
Is it in the budget?
Million dollars, still five hundred thousand dollars. But I won't know that. I really, we can't, really can't have that conversation until I know more about costs. And to Tracy's point, uh, you know, uh, that, that cost can be depending on whether we're going to tear up the road or they're going to tear up the road. Who's going to haul off the asphalt? You know, those sorts of things. And our street department is very good at this. They've done it, you know, a number of times, so.
To your point, one of the discussions actually Lori and I had with her meeting is, uh, you know, I, it is one of my priorities that we fix our streets. And I'm just wondering, I know there's rural transportation money out there, uh, but my expertise is not in road building. It's in transit. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't take a few weeks to see if there's some money out there that will help us pay for this.
I'm not in a hurry on this. This could be late summer. I mean, it's, I, we're not talking about earlier in the summer. There's just too much to, to, to get in place. And I'm thinking like a lot of this D that, that other people are going to do, you know, we, we have to wait till they're done. You know, even think about it. I'm thinking maybe August, September.
Grants are on cycles and we need to figure out.
I've never heard about any grants that allow us to pave streets if there are. I, I'd be tickled with that.
Were you waiting for it to come up and slap you in the face?
I was doing exactly that.
Okay.
That's, you figured out my motorcycle on that.
There is money out there. There's rural transportation money out there from the federal government and we need to find out if any of it applies to what we would like to do.
Yeah. And I think, oh, I was just going to say, as far as, as far as chasing the money, I, you and I talked about this. We absolutely agree there that, uh, I think Leadville can do a better job at chasing the money. The thing is, we need the bandwidth to do it. And so, uh, Gabby, let me know about the Intermountain Regional Transportation Coalition, I believe. Is their official name? But they are, um, the municipal planning organization who gets the federal money and doles out a lot of the federal money. And federal money is a lot of money for your transportation. That is the big ticket item for, for transportation. So, um, I am going to go to their meetings. I've been, I have requested to be put on their, uh, list for upcoming meetings so that we're at the table when there is discussion about money and we will be sure to ask and, uh, be persistent about any money that's available. There's also a, a subscription list that I want to sign up for. I, I, for some reason I couldn't do it the other day. Sustainable Strategies is a Washington DC-based consulting group. And they help you write grants, which maybe we don't need, but they have a great email list. They will email out grants that are upcoming. Sometimes it isn't enough time for a small municipality like us to get our paperwork together. Uh, but I used to subscribe to that. I want to get back on that mailing list because they have lots of, some of the grants. But I mean, remember, you know, a while back, there was one for body cameras for police departments. And so there's just, they'll, they'll summarize any grants then usually within timeframes that we can apply for them. So we are going to keep our eye on, not sure we'll get any time for streets this summer, but we are going to keep our eye on what money's out there.
The other possibility is while I may have this vision of fifteen or thirty, uh, blocks, I don't know. We'll get it all done this summer. It's, it's, so many things have to come together, uh, to get it done. We wanted to be paving last summer. We couldn't do it because we couldn't find anybody to do it for us. Uh, but even then, you know, it just got to require some patience and it could be a multi-year project, in which case we might have time for some of these applications. Alright, thank you. Um, I wanted to, I don't know if I've told you guys this. I had a visit, um, last week uh, from a group who wants to build a housing project. It's outside the city limits, north of twelfth street, uh, kind of north of twelfth street and, and and seventh street box. It's, it's that, it's the hill up there. It's all, you know, fraught roads and, and, uh, and trails and stuff up there. They purchased that. Uh, and it sits just outside the city limits. They had asked something about annexation. Like, my answer to them was, and I think we talked about this before, is, look, I'm not going to really have that conversation with you. If you go to the county commissioners and if they agree that annexation is something would be in the interest, best interest of our entire community, then I'd consider it. You know, but otherwise, uh, just it's, it's, it's not really worth our time, even if we discuss it. So if that's, that's the same thing we do at the rail yards, is we went to the county commissioner and said, here's what we're thinking. Do you think this is the right thing to do? And they all said yes. Uh, so I, I'm not, I don't want to project what's going to happen here. I don't, I don't love the idea of annexing, annexing anything more. I don't, I don't see any real value to it. The only reason they would want it is to get, they get TIF. Cause then we, we could, you already could put a plan area together and, and they could get part of TIF to help, you know, them finance their, their development. But other than that, uh, but it's a nice looking develop about sixty homes and then they have some front areas that were, uh, what they call higher density housing. And, uh, maybe a few commercial lots. So, I mean, that's it. They, uh,
One advantage to annexing them is, um, if we had an inclusionary zoning ordinance that required them to build some affordable housing within their development, which the county does not have.
Nor do we, but even if we don't, a- and this is one of, this was one of the discussions around inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning is usually a, a, a number. It's fifteen percent.
Or a fee and loom.
Or a fee and loom. And the fee and loom doesn't get you much, I don't think, in my personal opinion. But we still have, if they were annexed into the city, then we, they'd have to go through a PUD, FIA and developer agreement, in which case they would negotiate that with us. So I still think we would be in the driver's seat. But, um, we found, you know, in the past, this is very labor intensive. All of it. Um, and I don't, I don't mind going down the road if we, if we agree it's in the best interest of our community. That, that, you know, all the way, I think we should consider. Any thoughts?
So you, you seem sure, Mr. Mayor, about being in the driver's seat and being able to negotiate those parts of affordable housing. I came into the rail yard, um, late as a council member. But it seemed to me like in phase two, we actually did not have any sort of leverage because we did not have any sort of inclusionary zoning. So how, how does it work that we would have any leverage if?
Well, we exercised leverage with regards. I mean, you know, some people think we didn't leverage it enough. But we got five slots, you know, uh, in terms of, of the potential for affordable housing.
And was that a, a good faith agreement with the developer?
It's in writing.
It was in writing, but, but it was because the developer agreed to it. Not because of any sort of standards we have established.
Correct, correct.
To me, it seems like, again, I would be new to the idea of annexation, but the big value proposition to me would be if we could, negotiate for any sort of gains in the affordable housing world.
Sure.
Um, and then otherwise I'd be open to hearing other benefits, but.
We've learned, we've learned a lot in the last six years. I'd say that. I, I would say that, and, and if they, they have to request annexation, we can't just annex. We have to ever request from the landowner. And when they do that, then that's what negotiation could take place right then and there. And I think we'd probably be a little more savvy.
And we could get that in writing at that point.
It would be, yeah, it would be part of the annexation process. Yeah. I, you mean, I understand what you're saying. I don't like inclusionary zoning because it puts a, it puts a stake in the ground. And every development's different. And so inclusionary zoning is a double-edged sword, in my opinion. You could be, you know, uh, putting a requirement in place that could, uh, force the development to not happen, that you would like to see happen. And you'd like to see the benefit of affordable housing. So, um, I, I've always thought inclusionary zoning is maybe a, a bit much.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I mean, we had a, a presentation from Chief Daley today that said all of his workers are now living together down in Denver and some of which are living five hours away that serve our community because they cannot find housing here. What you just told me is that sixty houses is, I think you said sixty homes is in that development between seventh and twelve.
Those are all single-family homes.
Single-family. I would say they're probably going to be close to one million dollars apiece.
Yeah.
By the time they're there.
I would agree.
Not going to, um, they're, they're, what that's going to happen with sixty more families or family units. Or however they do it, they are going to put added pressure on our services without providing any housing to the people that they're asking those services.
Except they have three sections in there that were not part of those sixty houses for higher density. That's, that's all they have in there because they, they didn't know what that meant yet. That's where the affordable housing would be.
So they were saying to have some higher density.
Yes.
Higher density at the rail yard to cost more than those single-family homes at this point.
They're over seven hundred thousand dollars for those townhomes.
Yeah.
I had heard that. I've heard six fifty this last number. Is that what they're asking now? I'm not surprised that the one home was sold.
Higher density doesn't always imply affordable.
Okay.
Unless it's deed restricted.
Yeah. Unless it's deed restricted and it's multifamily homes, five flexes, you know, like the farm, uh, down, down in Buda Vista, things like that. I think you get to kind of have that conversation and dictate, uh, that layout.
We didn't have that power with phase two. It was all the goodwill of the developer.
It would be great to see if we can ask them to annex it because then we may have more control.
Yeah. I mean, if the county were to, were to say that they think it's in the best interest, then we would have that conversation. I would say I'm not against annexation, but that's not quite true. It really, it put a huge burden on us in every single way possible.
Deal with that burden. We can hire a planning person. We can have a planning department where it doesn't fall on, you know, the existing staff. We, we need that person here.
Yeah.
These, these types of developments are going to accelerate. I mean, have you looked at the real estate, the, websites and the lots of land that are for sale right now? There are many, many large acre lots of land that are for sale to be subdivided and developed. And, uh, I, they're going to keep coming.
When I was talking to Charlie Chup with Fanny West last week, when we were there.
I think it was two weeks ago.
Was it really?
Just three years ago.
Anyway, he said there's a, there's a one acre parcel in Buda Vista for sale for two million dollars. Anyway, he said there's a, there's a one acre parcel in Buda Vista for sale for two million dollars. It's, it's a little scary, I mean, I admit. Uh, our efforts internally are going to be to build out the, the affordable housing that we can, uh, this summer. To RFQs, which will turn into RFPs. And I, I have high hopes for that. We think. It was, it was between ten and sixteen units on one of the proposals. So it depends on the layout. And then, you know, I still, I'm still hanging a lot of hope on, on McWhethy parcel climax. Is remediating now. Want to get to us. And that, that's a big deal. We can do a lot of nine acres. Do even more if, if the, uh. School district agrees to, uh, to join in that effort with, with a couple more of those acres, uh, between that land and the middle school. And that's a conversation that Michael Yurman is having with, with school district right now. So. They're just a lot of, lot of possible, uh, but. I'm ready to make something happen. And I think everyone else is too.
Well, don't forget about phase three, the rail yard two.
That's all, that's all fading west, right? And they. I was so impressed. I mean, I'll just speak for myself. What they're doing is quite incredible. And he thinks they can put houses, even now, in the current market place, on the ground for sale for two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That would be incredible.
It would be.
But it will only be incredible if they're deed restricted, because if they're not, they're just gonna get gobbled up.
He knows that.
Have they closed down that parcel?
Yeah, they own ten point five acres. They, they know that. What he's talked about was deed restriction about fifty percent of the homes they built now. You know, some of these. Pardon me?
Equity caps too.
That would all be part of the deed restrictions. Yeah. The deed restrictions can be a lot of different things. It could be residency. It can be income. And it can be equity caps. And then what that means, because sometimes equity caps are not quite adequate. You have to say, okay. Well, if they improve the home in certain ways, they can take that equity out. And that would be in addition to the three percent per year that they're allowed to have, which is what some of those.
Who is working on the deed restriction?
The, the, uh, the housing coalition's been working on it for a couple of years.
Okay, well, we might wanna speed that up a little bit.
I think they, you know, they're, they're working on it. They, they. Uh, well, actually, uh, they're working now with Michael Yurman. And that's part of his timeline. It's just what we talked about where. Some of these things in his timeline are in progress.
But he's not under contract to the city.
I know. So there's, there's kind of a building conflict there. But I, I think that's just, that's, that's a technicality. I think both, both these, in, these things, Michael Yurman's, uh, project. What he wants to do and what we wanna do are not mutually exclusive. The timelines are different because he wants to put housing on the ground in about three years. And we wanna put housing on the ground this year and next year. That, so that, that's the big difference. So we don't have, we don't have to follow him, but we should use him.
Do we wanna put him under contract to specifically come up with deed restrictions for the city of Letham?
No, because that's already being done. I don't, I don't know that he's, well, I mean, they're, they're close, community guidelines. Hey, Tim, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh. Um, and thank you, Tracy, and just. I just wanted to reiterate what Lori had pointed out earlier is that the, the joint meetings that we wanna start having. And the first one to discuss community guidelines would include, uh, deed restrictions. So all the decision makers with, you know, within the city and county can start having these discussions and you guys can. Have your input and then start making decisions on those. So I think that work is coming within the next two months. Well, this month and then next month.
Thanks. Tim, do you know how far they are with community guidelines right now? Cause I think they were pretty far along in that process.
There's a draft.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a, there's a draft from the housing coalition and, uh, I believe Michael has the draft and is working on it. So I, I mean, I think his goal is obviously that's the first meeting that he would have something. A, a draft ready for everybody to review.
But again, it's not, we're not the ones making that decision. It's, it's the county, it's. He is not under contract to the city. We're not discussing it. They're discussing it.
Well, that's actually, that's, so that's, no, that, I was at the meeting with, uh, county manager and Michael Yurman and the housing director. And we were all discussing what the plan should be. And I was very clear that we want to be involved. We wanna be at the table. So that's why we're gonna do these joint meetings, because I think there's a lot of discussions about housing and a lot of tools that we have. And we just all need to get on the same page about what we, as a community, decide are our priorities for short term. Medium term and long term, because there's, there are.
No, no offense, but we don't have to get on the same page. We're the city and they're the county.
Well, except that, except that we're, there's a symbiosis here. Now, the county's late to the, late to the game. The city has been working on this for five years with the, with the, with the, uh, uh, housing coalition. I've been going to those meetings for five years. Dana, yes, please.
Yeah, I, I think maybe you just answered that, but don't we, we're part of the housing authority and we're part of. The housing director oversight, not correct?
True. Yeah, we are, we are the housing authority. It's a.
So I think, so we do have. That, you know, like we may not be contracted essentially with Mr. Yurman, but. We, we have, I, I mean, I think we're just written into it as part of the decision-making body.
I, I would say this, Dana, uh, we have been part of it all along. And, and like I said, the county's just joining the party. After all these years. So, um, we just have to be careful to not. Compartmentalize the, the, the county and the city. We're gonna reach these decisions together. And we're, we may do some things without the counter. You know, we're certainly gonna do the urban law authority, certainly gonna do their thing without the county's help. And the climax parcel, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll use their help, maybe we won't, but, but it's gonna be our deal.
But that's my point is we're looking at trying to build. In the URA this summer. And that's not their timeline. They're looking at three years from now to get deed restrictions in place, but we need them now. Not three years.
We'll have them. And, and besides, keep in mind that one of those two, uh, organizations that've been on this. Wouldn't, they wouldn't be arguing restrictions. They'd be theirs. They already have it all set up. That's what they do and they monitor those deed restrictions in perpetuity. Because it's a housing trust model. Because the land never belongs to the homeowner.
We haven't decided on that yet. That's open for discussion.
Right. I, I think we're a lot further along than you think. And there's a lot going on.
You're a lot further along than the rest of us think.
That, that's true, but that's because I've been working on it all these years. And, and that's the nature of, of what staff does.
But it sounds like you've already made some decisions in your mind that we haven't even discussed it.
Decisions? No. That's one, that's one of the two possibilities.
It was going to be a housing trust.
Yeah, please, Tim.
I just, I, uh. You know, not speaking on behalf of the board of county commissioners, but speaking, you know, just. In good faith of like working with, uh, city administrator. Lori and with city council, like the county is committed to working with. With the city council and all of the other, and, and decision makers. To. Discuss and work on community guidelines, including the deed restrictions and starting to move this work forward. So that's why we would like to propose and like start having these joint music, meetings. To have the more in-depth discussions. So we can adopt these community guidelines and move some of this work forward. The county wants to work very much with you guys. Obviously, the housing director is jointly funded and created by an IGA between the city and the county. And we just wanna make that commitment. And I wanna make that, from me, my perspective, I wanna make that commitment to city council. That we're here to work with you on it to drive this work forward.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Comment for Tim? Please, your comment.
I just wanna say that we do share a risk with the county when it comes to lack of affordable housing. And that's why I'm grateful to hear that Tim and. Our city administrator and everybody else has been starting to work on this, like, collaboration to. Share that risk because we don't have deed restrictions. We're not gonna have workers for all these people that are asking and demanding those services in our community. To council member Loretson's point. If we're gonna have our certificate of occupancy sometime in the fall or early winter for these. These proposed build outs on the URA, the lure of parcels there. That is our timeline to have something in place because we need those in place.
To your point, we do know that. And Tim just said, he thinks we're about two months out from, from implementing or having deed restrictions that are ready to go.
I didn't hear that.
Tim, I'm sorry, let, let's, uh, let's clarify. Tim, I, I thought I heard you say that you think. About two months to have community guidelines and deed restrictions ready, ready for consideration. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess I, I would frame it as within the next two months, the decision makers of Leadville and Lake County. Will begin having a lot of discussions and then therefore decisions, uh, in front of them on. Deed restrictions and community guidelines. So presentations from the, from Michael Yurman, from the housing coalition, from our housing director. On options that all of you can decide to adopt. And I think that that is very feasible within the next two months. For those decisions to be, to be made.
Thank you.
So I, I do think it is essential to council member Loretson's point that. If we need to implement something sooner in order to actualize the lure of parcels, we may need to. I do think it is in our interest to be aligned with the county. As long as we like what that looks like. And if, and if we need to do it better, we need, we need to do it better. And we have that option. Um, another element of the deed restrictions or the community guidelines though is. There's the deed restrictions and then there's the, uh, application and selection process and, and all of that and. Is, is that stuff fall in draft form as well?
So what my understanding is that's gonna be part of the presentation on March twenty eighth is to present those options to you and how that might look. So as far as I understand, I have seen the paper copy of the draft of community, the community guidelines. And that Michael's working on it. And so I think that's the goal is to have that. And that's the thing is there's, you know, we have an ambitious timeline to cover some. Pretty weighty topics. And one of the things I'm trying to get a handle on, uh, is, uh. You know, affordable housing is the number one issue. There are short, medium and long-term solutions. And it doesn't mean that you have to focus on one at the expense of, of another. Or just because you're pursuing one, you shouldn't make time to pursue another. So just because we might be looking at. Building housing in three years, that's actually a good thing, but maybe we need to look at medium term, which are, uh, you know. Something in the year or less. And then there may be opportunities that are instantaneous where. If an op, you know, an opportunity comes up for the city to lease something for workforce housing, maybe we do something like that. But what I wanted to try and do in some of these work sessions and with our meetings one-on-one is sort of, we need to. We need to figure out what our short meeting and long term and housing action plan, how we're gonna implement things in that. But. I, I, there are a lot of options and there are a lot of people, very hardworking people working on options. I just think it's really good now that we're all in the same room and talking to each other. We have a housing director. You know, Tim and I are talking, we're, we're, we're having these joint meetings so that we can decide. This is where we're gonna prioritize our energy. If we need to shift, that's great. We'll come back to you and say, look, here's an opportunity. We're working on these long-term things. It's medium term things. Now we have a short-term option. No one solution is going to solve the problem. But I think we have great people helping us that we have opportunity for money. The city has money. And the mayor's been pursuing opportunities to acquire land. So. You know, it's not, I think we have done a lot. And I think coordination is a really important aspect of it because the county's problem is our problem. You know, it's this, we all have the same problem. Service personnel, workforce, being able to hire, it's the same problem. And if we can share resources, I think that's really helpful.
I do certainly agree. It's just, his, in recent history, the city has been quicker to act. I think. And so I, I. I wanna balance aligning with the county with immediacy of action because, because these. Developments are just gonna keep rolling through.
Yeah. To your point and to Tracy's point. I, I want to, to have this coordination with the county and the symbiotic relationship, but we don't have to wait for them to do things that we need to do now. And so that, that's, I, I don't wanna think of it as, uh, I think it's been kind of posed as a schism. Between the two, and I don't think that's true. I, I just think we have two slightly different objectives, but we have a lot of. Parts, uh, that we're gonna share.
I don't, I don't mean to imply that there's a schism. I'm just concerned about the timeline. And that, you know. They're looking at a project in three years and we're looking at a project this summer.
No, you're right.
But I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
Well, I think the tours of values work very hard to put us in a position to succeed. And we have to. I mean, the URA is, is going to be the first affordable housing built, you know, during, in this era. And so, you know, I think, I think, uh, you know, we've, we've done a lot of good. Assuming we get it built. I, I always, I always wondered yesterday. I honestly thought we'd be building homes in twenty twenty. And as usual, I was wrong.
How's the community bank slots? How's that progressing? Have we moved forward on an agreement with that?
The guy has not gotten back to me. Cristiano, uh, put together a lease agreement with, with, uh, discussion between she and I. We've presented to them. I sent the guy a note last week. I have not heard back. So I don't, I don't have a great answer. They seem very willing to do that. And he asked me to send him a lease. And so we've done, no, we can't wait this second. I sure hope we can get that done before summer. But I can say we're gonna have it done before summer, but as usual.
And I, I apologize if I seem a little strident. This is, to me, is the most important thing we can be doing right now. I'm gonna keep pushing.
Please do. Also have some faith in, in, in all the work that's been done. Anybody else? Any council reports?
Small council report. So, uh, one of my duties for my forest service job is, uh. Land adjustments and land acquisition for the forest service. So putting more land. Into, uh, forest service hands. And this Saturday, we're having a celebrated celebration out at the Mount Massive. Golf course and Nordic Center, uh, to celebrate, uh, the, the conveyance. Of the last private inholding in the Mount Massive Wilderness and making it. Forest service lands. And so the entire Mount Massive Wilderness will be entirely contiguous. And there won't be any parcels in there that, um, could have.
Is this something that the forest service have been working on since nineteen eighty seven?
This one actually has been occurring for at least seven years. It had a couple of iterations. Uh, I won't get into it. If you're really interested, I'll tell you about it. But we had to, we had to. There were some land exchanges that was, that they were trying to work with some folks over on the other side of the hill. In Avon, and that passed through. And so we, uh, partnered with the Wilderness Land Trust. And they purchased land for short-term parts, for a short-term period of time. Where we can get our procurement group to actually buy that land from, uh, a conservation.
So when you do that, you, did you, you, did. So when you do that, you, did you, you, did you have to provide, I, I don't know the best, provide access to people who have in holdings?
That's a completely different, uh, topic, but yes, we do have to provide.
Closing this out means you don't, you shut off all that access.
But that is a, the access is for the reasonable use and enjoyment of those types of in holdings, that are a hundred percent surrounded by national forests and lands, that are similarly situated with other types of access provided already. So, if you had a parcel in the middle of Mount Massive Wilderness and you asked for a superhighway to get there, that would not be the reasonable use and enjoyment. And it wouldn't be something similarly situated on, you know, within another wilderness area. I mean, maybe there is. I don't think so. But so that's exciting to actually. So, non-development. Wow, who would have thunk, right? We're talking about development. We're actually talking about protection.
I would say I've been pleased that the county commissioners have kind of held the ground on, on mining and industrial land on the east side. Um, it's always been a fear that they would open some of that up, and, and they're not doing it. In fact, the thirty-six acres, eight of it is in mining industrial. And so they can't build them. They're, they're going to make it a park or whatever, that's adjacent to the housing. I just thought that was, I thought that was in chief, but I also really appreciate the county commissioners', uh, push. And this backcountry zoning that they've done. I, I kind of, I like it. Anything else? City Council? Dana, I sure appreciate you hanging in with us.
Yeah, no problem.
You are, you are Leadville tough. That's all I got to say. Anything else before we go? At nine twenty-five, the city council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.